Present are 11th? Whatever. I think we've lost the whole month already. I'm still back in February digging something out of my driveway. Carl Borchardt, Joe Marklinger, John McLaughlin, Nat Lowell, myself, Lynda Williams, and staff Leslie Snell and Andrew Vorse and Catherine. Are we on TV? Or is she doing that?
It should be all set.
Okay. We do have an audio recording and we have a TV recording. If anybody else would like to take the meeting, please let us know now. Not seeing anything. We do have an agenda before us.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the agenda as written. In a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We'll make a motion to take the A and Rs first.
We're going to take things out of order that we can do without Barry so we don't run into a quorum issue again. So if you all like to jump right to the A and Rs, which are on page three of your report. Does anybody see? Joe, do you have any conflicts in there?
No, I don't have any conflicts.
Okay, we have...
Staff, should we take? The first one was just this reaffirming issue. So can we just approve that with the others?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 A and Rs. If somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve 7810, 7825 Ry Realty Trust, 7826 KKPC LLC, 154 Surfside, 7827 Town and Antucket, 7828 Town and Antucket, 7829 Town and Antucket, 7830 Town and Antucket, and 7831 Town and Antucket.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
John? That was unanimous. Wesley, do you want us to go to secondary dwellings?
Yes, please.
I'm out on Juanita Gill, Hall Lane for secondary and tertiary.
Which one is that one?
Third one down. Hall Lane, 4 Hall Lane.
Oh, Hall Lane, okay.
We have to hold off then.
We can't do those with your three, right?
Three, right.
Which ones?
The secondary dwellings?
Secondary dwellings, you just need a simple majority, sending three out of four.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So let the record reflect that Joe is recusing Catherine from Juanita Gill, 4 Hall Lane. But he's okay on the rest.
So we'll take those out of one of them.
So if somebody would like to make a motion on Michael O'Connor, 40 Paco Morode, Mark Evans on 2 Hickory Meadow, Dubuque, Kizbosh, Family Nominee Trust, 14 Nonantum, and NHA Properties Housing, Antucket.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman. NHA Properties, we need to continue that one.
Okay.
They need relief by the zoning board of appeals.
That's what I thought. So we have Michael O'Connor, 4 Paco Morode, Mark Evans, 2 Hickory Meadow, and Dubuque, Kizbosh, 14 Nonantum Avenue. Is that your motion?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded on those three. All those in favor?
Aye.
John? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Juanita Gill, 4 Hall Lane.
Okay. I'll second that. I'll second that for the record. I can second, I just can't motion. Any further discussion on 4 Hall? There's just three of us, John, myself, and Nat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. What else can we do? Previous plans?
Tertiary.
Tertioriaries?
Can we do that? Okay, okay.
This is our first foray into tertiary dwellings. I assume because we haven't done these before that you've thoroughly looked at these guys?
We have, yes.
Okay. Does somebody have any comments about those or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to...
I'm out on Hall Lane again.
Right. I'll make a motion to approve Robert and Susan Campese and Michael and...
Athlon Sweeney.
Comment?
John?
These tertiary, are they contingent upon the Attorney General approving?
No.
Yes, people can move forward at their own risk until we have approval by the Attorney General.
All right, so Nat's made a motion to approve Campese, 67 Milestone Road, and Sweeney at 1 Longwood Drive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Joe? Okay. That was unanimous, and you've made a motion on Gill.
We make a motion to approve Juanita Gill, 4 Hall Lane.
And Joe Marklinger has recused Catherine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was John in favor. All right, that's four in favor. Let the record reflect that Barry came in at 6:44. 43. Whatever it is. Okay, we have done the A and Rs, the secondary dwellings, and the tertiary dwellings, and now we're backing up. Okay. Great. Thanks.
Special permit.
Yes, it is. Public hearings at this point. So if anyone's, did you mention 7716 or White Elephant?
No.
Okay. So if anyone's here for 7716, which is the Valero Road subdivision, or 7771, which is the White Elephant Hotel LLC, those continue to our next meeting on June 8th. Next thing before us at this point under our public hearings is 7824, which is the White Hart Lane subdivision on 24 Boulevard.
I mean, for the record, Mr. Chairman...
Yes, ma'am.
Both Nat and I have mullered in, but I have not signed the form. So somebody just tell me what it is I need to sign. But we both mullered back in on whatever came from the last meeting.
I think this is brand new before us.
It is, but I just wanted to say that.
Oh, okay, thank you for other stuff. Thank you, I'm so sorry.
What are we taking ahead now?
Don't worry, Mr. Glidden, it's about other things.
Good. I'm easily confused and it's...
Well, to my will.
For the record, Richard Glidden, on behalf of White Hart subdivision, 24 Boulevard, Mr. Malloy is the surveyor engineer, and he's got family issues. He couldn't be here this evening, so the second team has showed up. This is pretty simple. It's a residential subdivision of a 4.78 acre piece of land into three lots. One of the lots is a roadway lot. There'll be two building lots, one of them already has a house on it. Both of the lots are served by town water and town sewer. We are subject to MISA, and there's a MISA application pending. It's going to, we're proposing a 30-foot wide road with a 12-foot wide gravel and cross-sell traveled way. In essence, it's a driveway for the rear lot. Mr. Pesci from, is it Pesci or Petchy?
Pesci.
Pesci. Has reviewed the plans and submitted a report, which Mr. Malloy has reviewed, and Mr. Malloy is fine with incorporating all of Mr. Pesci's recommendations into the plans. Each lot meets, is more than 80,000 square feet, has adequate frontage, and we're proposing that each lot be allowed a second dwelling. It's about that simple. I don't think there's anything I have to add unless there are questions.
Let me find out, board members, is there anything you want to discuss on this particular issue? Yes, Mr. McLaughlin.
One comment, some piece of engineering. And they recommend, number three, on page 11, they recommend, however, we recommend the fire department duty stand and provide comments to the board for a 14-foot roadway to turn around, and there's no letter. Is it missing?
Well, I think this is just the first hearing, it's just been open, so I assume that you guys, if you voted to approve or close the hearing or whatever, you'd wait, you'd be contingent on getting this letter from the fire department. Again, I don't know if Dan's been in touch with Pesci, but he's told me that all the recommendations are fine, so that would certainly be a contingency that we get this letter from the fire department.
Okay, you're going to comment, my chef. I don't know where the letter is. Yeah, it was the one.
Yeah, we didn't, we have not received a letter yet.
Have you seen that? Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah.
No, Mr. Marklinger?
No, I'm also...
I'm sorry, I thought you had your hand raised.
No, no.
Anyone else on the board? Staff, please. Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Schrimm, thanks. I have, I mean, I have no problem with the proposal. One concern I do have with these types of roads, and I know that the applicants did attempt to reach out to the abutters on the small street that was created to the one side, the Rainbow's End.
Yeah, I think on the east of the edge of the property, there's a similar piece of property, the same size, that they did a subdivision similar to this, and it would have made a lot of sense to use that one road, but we tried and they weren't interested.
Right. And I do think the board, when they consider these, should ask for some sort of an easement granted in advance, because if the abutting property, I think we want to avoid those situations because access could have been consolidated at one location.
Correct.
You know, if the abutters had been amenable to it. And unfortunately, we did not put any condition in our approval of that Rainbow's End, and I think that we ought to start doing that, you know.
I agree.
The mirror image, or with a slight modification, the abutter could, you know, would be able to finish the road and not add another street. I would hate to see the Boulevard, on this particular side, we planned to put the bike path here, and to have it chopped up with a bunch of little mini streets would not be a good idea.
Yeah.
So that would be the only...
Well, that's a sensible recommendation.
Additional condition that I would like the board to consider to put into its approval.
Now, or...
Yeah.
As part of the condition of approval now, they would grant some sort of an easement, which we would...
Yeah, we would draft something that commits us in the, you know, commits our property to give a certain rights to the neighbor in the event the neighbor decides to do something similar and needs access. I think that's, makes sense.
It's a good thought, really.
And to limit, the other thing which we normally do would be to limit the access for both lots to the interior roadway as opposed to direct, directly onto Boulevard.
That's not a problem either.
Beautiful.
Can we get an access to the bike path?
What? Go ahead.
Can we get anything relative to the bike path through this decision? Or is that outside the scope?
They're getting, they've asked for a waiver, and I think a waiver is appropriate. We...
She means the bike path easement. Do you already have a bike path easement on this one?
No, she's not talking about that.
No, we don't have one yet.
The ease, the right-of-way for Boulevard is actually wide enough so an easement is not required from the property owners. I don't know if a bike path contribution is appropriate here.
Certainly a road improvement.
The road improvements are...
They disappeared into a hole the other day.
Normally, we...
It's already in the works, though, and the bike path is years away, really.
Well, that's true, but usually, you know, where we can, we request funding, and then for design work and other things that come up.
Do you have a figure for that particular location?
Well, I think we would apply our standard formula, which is, what is it? 2,000 per dwelling unit?
Yeah, well, I don't, again, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me, and I'm sure my client, being a reasonable person, will happily agree.
We love reasonable.
Yeah, well, if you find one, let me know.
Yes, Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. Staff, I'm reading on page 11, top of the page. If you want to create a 12-foot wide gravel or cross-sell roadway, my question is, usually we start out on a subdivision of 20 feet and we get down to 16. Is there any great reason we get down to 12?
Because this is essentially, you know, almost a shared driveway serving just two lots, the board has relaxed that standard. It's, you know, it's an area, a fairly rural area. It's pretty much found, I mean, I think if you look at Rainbow's End, the board required a wider street, and I think it's somewhat out of scale. I don't know if you've looked at that particular area, but...
I didn't look at Rainbow, I looked at the open lot to share.
Right. We have, we have, the direction of the board has been to look at smaller interior roadways where there's just one or two lots.
Thank you.
Yep, anything else from the board or staff? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open, so if anyone in the audience would like to comment on this? Not seeing any hands raised.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And do I hear a second discussion on the issue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I was having unanimously, pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve with 2,000 per unit, which I think would be eight total?
Yes.
8,000 total for the bike.
And the letter from the fire department.
The letter from the fire department.
Right.
The grant to easement.
Rights for an easement.
Rights for an easement, should it come up. I don't know how you want to phrase that, but you know what we're trying to do.
Yeah. I'll second that.
I don't, I don't know how we're going to craft the language, but I don't want to, definitely, I mean, I don't want to, we're not going to be able to give you an easement, I don't think. I mean, we'll commit, but the property will be subject to it in the event we need it, but I don't, that's what I'm saying, I don't want you to say.
Language about it.
They'll have to, they'll have to craft it whatever way that's going to work.
Right, and I think...
I understand the substance.
Yeah.
You want to share with the guy next door, it's the same thing, you can use that road.
Right. I think staff has given that consideration, so I'm sure they'll probably have some appropriate language to make that happen.
So you would grant, you'd be able to grant rights for them to use the road, because we have a couple off of Cliff Road where they don't. Now we have a new road every 100 feet.
I think.
Yep, exactly.
This is pointless, and we tried to get it to work out up there, and it didn't. So that's my motion.
Okay, and do I hear a second? The motion is made seconded for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I was having unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Glidden. Next thing before us is 04-15 Brotherhood of Thieves Amendment. This is on 23 Broad Street. Mr. Bresher raising to the, rising to the occasion here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
For the record, Attorney John Bresher, representing 23 Broad Street LLC, doing business as the Brotherhood of Thieves. Just quickly, I believe our last board had Carl in, as opposed to Mr. McLaughlin.
Okay.
As their, I'll just make sure that Mr. Borchardt had, has done the mullings, the necessary steps with the mullings rule.
You have, thank you, sir.
From March 9th.
Yes.
I did the mullings from March 9th, and I signed the paperwork, and I was here in April.
Terrific.
That's right. So you know, John, you're not going to be sitting in on this one.
Okay.
You didn't mull in on this in any way, shape, or form, so this is going to be one of those, I mean, you're welcome to comment, but you won't be voting on it, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll find out then. All right, Mr. Bresher, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to recap, we've been before this board a few times at this point, I believe, first in January, then it was renoticed in February, and then in March, we heard again, we were heard again. The application, or the request at this point has been tailored down significantly from what the original application was. I won't necessarily belabor you with what our original request was, but at this point, the only thing before this board with respect to this amendment is that my clients are requesting to expand the patio and increase the total patio seating capacity from 60 seats to 80 seats. There is a site plan that Michael Connolly has prepared, I believe that has been circulated to you. If not, please let me know, I have one. The other change is that the open space, as a result of the patio, is now actually being increased from 22% to 24%. And finally, that, as far as relief goes, that the board approve the site plan under minor site plan review. I know that at our last hearing, two issues were addressed. One was some sort of sound mitigation, whether it be through an awning or a pergola. My clients are happy to do either at the bequest of the board, and we're trying to, trying to address that situation however you deem fit. The other, the other involve the fans and the maintenance thereof, and the odor and noise. I believe that the Butters Council has requested that, that at that condition of the original MCD be reopened under a separate application, and I would respectfully request that we address those issues in that application and keep the two, these two issues separate. I believe that's the way the board was leaning last time. So really, before you, what we have is the expansion of the patio from 60 to 80, and we're happy to do some sort of sound mitigation via the pergola or the awning, really at your bequest, and minor site plan review.
Mr. Bresher, if I may?
Yes.
I'm just curious, the staff report says that it calls for an additional 60 seats?
Uh, no.
You're talking against an additional 20 seats.
No, we're talking additional 20 seats, yes.
That's what I thought, no, I just...
Yes, it was originally approved for 60, and we are requesting 80.
There you go, that's all right, yeah, that was a definite typo. Go ahead.
When is the, has the issue with the vent been applied for already for June, or where are we?
I believe it's, yes.
That's further on the agenda than the applicant has requested.
I was just so focused here.
It's not the next item of the...
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So board members, anything in relation to...
Yeah, please. John, can a pergola be built, or an awning, now?
Can it be built?
Can it be built, like, this season?
Now? Well, I should, let me say that, I don't, I don't believe, the...
The pergola is the bushes, right? Or the whatever it is.
That's a...
I don't even know what a pergola is. I hate to tell you.
It's like a vine, wood thing.
Sounds a little, sounds crunchy.
Fancy, yes.
No, it's nice.
I think we discussed it a while ago, but, okay, so that's...
Well, I'm not sure if it is, frankly, the patio expansion isn't going to happen
until the fall.
Oh.
They are not, they are not going to be doing this work now.
Okay, got it.
That, I mean, the season has started between, so...
I thought we were trying to...
No, we're not, we're not trying to rush anything. This is, no, this is to go to the HDC, find out...
I'm with you now.
Make it, make it appropriate, and then do whatever work needs to be done in the fall.
That's, that application is still just hanging at the HDC.
That explains it then.
Anything, staff? No?
So we have to define what we want now?
Well...
Awning or, or both?
Awning or pergola, I think both.
It's really, really up to you, and I suppose the HDC to a certain extent.
They also, it's sort of a, you know, the space and what's already there is not an awning.
Right, and to be, to be fair, they do have approval to do an awning over the existing patio.
Yeah.
They have not, but they do have approval in order to do so.
Go ahead, Mr. Marklinger.
If the issue was noise abatement, shouldn't the applicant be presenting to us, which will be noise to a greater extent, a pergola or an awning?
I would agree.
I mean, otherwise, we're just, I mean, I'm guessing that an awning would be better, but...
I would think that as well. I don't...
Trumpet, you know, I don't know.
Go ahead.
I would leave it at both, from past experience on another board. They both mitigate sound. It keeps the sound on site, and I don't know if the HDC will approve an awning depending on how it's put up with the framing. The pergola is up year-round, and it ages, and it weathers in, so it could be that we prefer the pergola to the awning, depending on how it's done. They do have a permit for the awning over the existing patio, so I think we, it's just sound mitigation.
I'm fine with that. The other, other thing is, shouldn't we wait to decide on this after we've gone over the reopening of the original permit?
They were meant, they were meant to be handled with separate applications at this point, because you're dealing with two different issues. I understand your point.
Well...
The applicants requested, and I think for this board, I am going to strongly recommend for you to consider these as two separate entities that are out there.
Well, the only reason I don't like that idea is because of the statute of limitations warning here. So I don't want to close this and then find out that the statute of limitations kicks in, and we don't get an opportunity to fix the venting. Is that, am I misdiagnosing this?
They have an application here.
No, I think that's correct.
Yeah. So that's...
That if, that, if that's an important issue to the board, you will probably need to make sure to add that as a condition if you're so inclined to do something with this existing application.
A condition that we've...
A condition about the venting.
In this application.
If, if, as the applicant has claimed, that there's some sort of lapse with the existing, if there's a statute of limitations that has run out...
Okay.
On the original permit...
Right.
They're asking for a new permit now.
Yep.
And if that's an important consideration for the board, you would need to include that, you would need to...
I understand.
Make sure that you've justified for us, for our decision, that they are interconnected.
Well, I just, I mean, you know, a lot of people come up and object, a lot of you Butters, I mean, they are getting 20 more seats. I think it's connected. I think they should...
So let's, let's get this beast off the table. Is that a claim that's being made by the applicant that...
It isn't, it isn't at this time. I mean, it's been, it's been brought to our attention.
Is it going to come up, Mr. Bresher, anywhere in the course of any of our dialogues? Yes or no?
Frankly, it may, it may. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know what our future dialogues are going to be.
All right, well...
I can, I can tell you with respect to the fans, I mean, my clients are committed to fixing them. There's, there's no doubt about that. They're, they're not, they're not going away. That's, that's not, that's not an option at this point, and we would, I mean, if, and if that were our, I can, you know, not, to give you a little preview, if our, if our stance were statute of limitations has run out, we don't, we don't think this is appropriate, I would, I would tell you that right off the bat.
Okay.
Fact is, we're, we're, we're not, we're not saying that at this time, and we want to work with the neighbors, and we want to get these fans resolved, because, as I said, the problem isn't going away, and the, I mean, the more cooperative a result we can get, the better.
Okay. Go ahead.
After 32 years dealing with zoning, this is the first time I've seen anything about a six-year statute of limitations on an MCD special permit that we ostensibly could reopen at any time. Can you just sort of give me the rundown on that one?
I think this is an important point that I'm going to have you guys address.
I understand the curative statute of six years and 10 years, but that doesn't seem to be the issue.
The issue is actually the 10-year statute, not the six-year.
Right.
That, well, I guess the question is, was there a building permit issued and validly acted upon that has now been questioned?
Never mind, I got it.
You're using the curative statute.[1615.33]
The curative statute because the conditions in the Zoning Board of Appeals or Planning Board Decision are part of zoning under that statute.
Yep, so if they constructed something, they had a validly issued building permit, they had, they constructed something in violation of that permit, if no one says anything for 10 years after the permit is issued.
Correct.
Then we can't force compliance, even though we can reopen our MCD for compliance.
Yep, the statute...
We've got a building, we've got a bill, issuance of a building permit versus the issuance of the MCD because we can technically open the MCD at any time for whatever reason, but we can't trump Section 7 of 48, correct?
That's my opinion, yeah.
That's the first time I've heard that.
If I may, just, just to be clear, just a few points of clarification. It's that such structures are protected by the 10-year statute of limitations measured from the commencement of the alleged violation. So it's not the issuance of the building permit, it's when, when the structure was erected. Just, yeah, I know.
I don't think that, that, that vent was not the original vent.
No, that, that's, that's correct.
At all, because that's where they had the fire.
That's, that is absolutely correct. It was, and I, and it's my understanding that this, that it was constructed and erected in, I think either February of, or March of 2005. And, and again, just to be clear with respect to what, what, what can and cannot be done with that 10-year statute, it's just the, you know, a, a judicatory body cannot force the, let's see, removal, alter, removal, alteration, or relocation of the violating structure. Or in this condition, the violating condition. But again, this is not, we're, we, it's been brought up, but we're not, we're not using this at this point. We're saying we, we want, we want to get these fans fixed. We want, we want, we want to make them right. We want, we're, we're going to be doing on, ongoing maintenance, which we described last time and which I'll be happy to have Dan Culp, the manager, discuss during our, during the other application. And we're going to, you know, meet, the, the idea is to meet with the neighbors and discuss exactly what the problems are with, with one of the owners of the Brotherhood and come figure out what we need to do for a solution. But again, I'd prefer that be addressed in its own separate application.
I know.
I'm not done with that.
We're not done with this anyway yet.
Okay.
Is there anything else from the board or staff at this juncture?
Oh, no.
Go ahead.
Can you waive that 10-year, can the applicant waive?
I, to be, to be perfectly honest with you, Mr. Marklenger, I would need to, I would want to check with town council or someone certainly more well-versed in this.
Would they waive it if they could?
I think, I mean, that's, that's, that's the path that we're going down. I can't speak for them without, without, you know, going through all the iterations with them, but like I said, we haven't, we haven't invoked it. I mean, we, we want to come, we want to work cooperatively and we want to get this, we want to get this fixed.
I understand, okay, that's great.
Anything else from the board? No? All right, this is a public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Ms. Rota, how are you tonight?
For the record, Rhoda Wyman, representing the butters to a Brotherhood. At the last meeting when this application was heard for the additional seating, there were concerns from the board members about noise mitigation, which you've just mentioned. And obviously, there would be additional noise from additional seating. It was suggested at that time that the applicant come up with plans to mitigate the noise that would be created by the additional seating. I haven't heard any plans. I heard tonight for the first time that they're willing to do either an awning or a pergola, but I haven't heard anything about how they're going to mitigate the noise. And I asked counsel for the applicant earlier today if he would agree to continue this for a month so that my clients could meet with a representative from the Brotherhood and discuss this because we'd really like to have the opportunity to understand how they're going to mitigate the noise. And I was told that they did not want to continue it, yet Mr. Brusher just said that they're not going to plan to do this work anyway until next fall. So I would request that we be given an app, an opportunity to have my clients talk to the representative to understand how they plan to mitigate it. I mean, I think that that's something that we're entitled to. It certainly appears from 20 additional seats that there'll be more noise, so, and I please ask you to remember how many letters you got in the mail in opposition to any additional seats. I think that there were, you know, many of them and they were very clear on all the reasons why they didn't feel that there should be any additional seats at this time. So I would ask you to please think about the neighbors and think about what they have gone through with these conditions and at least give the neighbors an opportunity to talk to the Brotherhood representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Mr. Collier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Cormac Collier, from the Nantucket Land Council, 6 Ash Lane. We're the most immediate abutter as it relates to the patio on 6 Ash Lane, the most immediate abutter on 6 Ash Lane. With Ms. Hudson's building going up, two floors, it really puts it into perspective in terms of how sound can now bounce, bounce against her building and then come directly to our building. We have a tenant on the second floor that we rent out at a very reasonable rate to nonprofits and we're just concerned about that tenant. I'm thrilled to hear that they want to do some sound mitigation, but I do agree with John in terms of them, the need for them to present something to you. I did a quick little Google search of pergolas and they're quite, pretty little structures, but they're certainly not sound mitigation. If I could, Mr. Chairman, to show you?
Yeah, sure.
Thanks.
Just start at that end and work, work your way down. Yeah.
Well, I don't know what, what they're talking about. So if they're much more heavy duty than that, that would be great. I just don't know exactly what they're talking about. It would be great to have the plans because if the case explodes, we don't have the ability to talk about them. I would like, I'd like to have the opportunity. And then in...
In terms of, Mr. Chairman, in terms of guidance for the public for comment on the, the venting, how would you like, like that?
That's going to come up shortly.
On the next application?
Yes, well, on, not on the next, next app.
The, two, two from now. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sue Lingeman and I live at 10 Ash Street with my husband Byron. And my issue is that I don't feel that it's fair for a handful of people to be allowed to profit at the expense of a neighborhood. And our wonderful neighborhood is being degraded bit by bit by the Brotherhood and their push for more and more. We've lived at 10 Ash Street for 49 years and just as an aside, when I was digging through documents to find out how long we've been at 10 Ash Street, John McLaughlin signed off on our kitchen renovation 49 years ago. Anyway, anyway, and he's still here. We enjoy being in our yard. It's a cherished part of our summer. Increasingly, the Brotherhood's escalation of noise and odors have been apparent. If the, if the increased seating is allowed, and I didn't know that it had been approved...
Hasn't been.
Oh, and the fan system, not brought up to code, will be forced to spend our summer in an un-air-conditioned, very old house. I just want you to be aware of the impact that increased seating and the fan has on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Mr. Johnson, I, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Culp, good evening. How are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good.
Don Culp, the general manager at the Brotherhood. It has been, one of the processes that we have started in this is not only the addition of 20 seats, but we definitely want an awning to cover the original portion of the patio. There's, there's no question of that. That is something we want and that will definitely be, sorry, that will definitely be a huge... It will definitely be a huge noise mitigation with the awning itself. The talk of the pergola was specifically about the new portion of the 20 seats that would be the expansion. Once again, more than happy to do that if the board requires that. We are, we've set, since we've been open, it has been required by law for us to clean the hoods twice yearly. We have set in motion for the hoods to be maintained accordingly at those time periods so that all belts get changed automatically. All pulleys and everything get lubed accordingly and we're going to do our best to mitigate any additional noise that those hood fans have caused or are causing at this point. We, we don't necessarily consider ourselves as bad neighbors and in fact, we really try and do our best to be part of the neighborhood and part of what makes Nantucket and downtown special. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bill Boardman, I've been here several times over the course of the, over the, over the course of the winter. If this isn't going to be built until the, the fall and nobody on the board, certainly nobody in the neighborhood, has seen what they're proposing, you know, we have, we've agreed that we'd be, we'd be prepared to meet with the owners of the Brotherhood to discuss all of these issues. And what's the, what's the rush? The question was asked by the, by the chairman as to whether they're intending to use the statute of limitations, and I don't know about any of you, but I certainly didn't hear the answer, no, we're not, that we're going to fix this. And so with, with, with that in mind and the fact that this doesn't need to be done right now, I suggest that we post, that you all postpone it and give us a chance to meet with them on all of these issues. If they want to be good neighbors, that's the best way to be a good neighbor, is to sit down with your neighbors and talk to them about what you're doing, not try to shove something down their throat. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howdy.
Hi, I'm Charlie Graber. We live on 4 Ash Street or Lane. I, I want to echo what Mr. Boardman said. I think that makes a whole lot of sense to us. We are willing to talk to anybody about every way we can get this fixed. It, it is a problem. I don't think anybody, even the proposed changes, they admit there's a problem. And I know that, we hear a lot of intentions, but we actually haven't heard any real commitments. And so it would be nice if we could sit down and hear about their plans. And I know we're not supposed to link this session to the next session, but 20 more seats is that many more burgers per hour. And I, I am concerned for, and a number of reasons in that area because these fans are sitting right across from Ms. Hudson's room. It must be 10 feet, I looked at it tonight. So you've got three huge fans spewing burger mist into a room which someone could be actually in. And they vent these grills and they make you grill outside because these are potentially carcinogens, particularly for children. And I, I just can't imagine we wouldn't have a more common sense solution to this. And it, and they're tied. I think they are tied together. The seats and the production of more burger smoke are tied together and I think it needs to be thought of in a big picture.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? Please.
Good evening, I'm Mary Parker. I live at 2 Ash Lane. Pretty sure it was referenced to my house, which is within a stone's throw of the system. I thought I might speak at the other issue, but I will just address now that that is my son's bedroom and that we never open the windows and were we to open the windows, it's as described, we would be having the downdrafted smoke, greasy smoke coming into the room and, and you know, the noise level that goes along with it. And I've written different letters to you explaining that I lived there as a year-round resident for 10 months out of the year. I rent it two months weekly in the summertime. And I brought this time a review from HomeAway that someone wrote, which has been posted. It's been on my site of my property for at least more than a year. Details not fully disclosed and part of the review says, "The house backs up to a restaurant slash bar with a loud, noisy, commercial ventilation system that runs 24/7." And that is the review that was put on my property, which is my main source of income. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Board members? Mr. Brusher?
Yeah? At this time, I mean...
Why can't we wait another month if it's not going to take place till the fall?
That they would like to get the approval now so they can start the HDC process.
You can start the HDC process right now. You don't have to wait for this to start the HDC process.
That's...
And it might be to your advantage to actually start the HDC process right now so we can get the awning approved. Because awnings have traditionally, from an HDC point of view, being the chairman, have caused some problems downtown, depending on the style, the color, the infrastructure for the, the awning. So I would start that now, so by the time you get back here in June, you've had the conversations with the neighbors, everybody can see what the awning looks like, the HDC's had a crack at it, and you can get something that's approvable and come in here and say, yeah, we've got an awning that's acceptable to the HDC, let's move on in June. But if you wait until this process comes back again in June, they won't have any more of an answer now on the awning than you have right this second. So I think you don't have to wait for this to go to the HDC.
Mr. Brusher, I gotta, I've gotta echo Linda's comments. I don't necessarily like making one board decision contingent on another, but the issue here, have you met with the neighbors on a curiosity and do they have a sense of, of what the awning and the pergola and...
No, we have, we have not about that.
Okay. Because I think that's really an important issue here that you guys do need to hammer out with them. I, I'm not sure you want to, I don't think you'd want an answer from this board and have to come back with, with significant revisions based upon things that may happen at the HDC. But I think we're both trying to track on the same issue here at the moment. I mean, I for one really believe strongly, because that's, that, most of the letters we got, that issue was cited consistently. And I think it's something that you need to have that time to, to be courteous enough to spend with them because as, as one member of this board, I think you're going to have to try to do the maximum you can out there.
I, I think that's, I think that's right. I think that applies to more issue than one.
And I think I've heard the commitment to that. I'm just going to ask you as one member of this board to, to, to step up to the plate and say, okay, let's, let's give them the time to make that happen so that you hopefully will achieve a, a, a significant amount of satisfaction from the neighborhood. You may not get everyone and I know that's always a tough task, but a majority, that I think, that I think makes a significant difference.
And we're discussing the, we're talking about the design and, the design and size of the awning at this point.
I think we're talking about the design size. I've heard the pergola mentioned as well too. I think you, I, I think as one member of this board, I'm turning to you as the applicant to say, how do you address that situation? You know, I'd, I'd like a little constructive feedback to say, awning, good, bad, pergola, good, bad, truly, you know, gee, we thought of something that no one thought of before, which may actually work a little bit better. And I think this board would be open toward hearing what some of those suggestions are, you know? Does, I mean, does that help?
I, I think, I think it does. I mean, I, I, it's, it's always good to get clarity on, on what you're looking for. Again, you know, we're, we're, we're happy to do whatever with respect to the awning and pergola. That's...
Okay. And like I said, there may be, there may be another solution that I'm going to ask you to put your thinking cap on.
Those highway noise barriers that you see? No?
Those are good.
If that's what you're suggesting, sir.
Not, not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't think so. I didn't think so. I'm just asking you to, to see if there's any other alternatives. He has the right to speak on it. Do not, he's not sitting on it. So let's be real clear about this, Mr. McLaughlin's role.
Because Carl is going after election.
Yes, but he... Linda? You sure? Yes, he has every right to do that. Sorry for that brief interlude.
I'll make a motion to continue this to June 8th.
All right. Do I hear a second? Motion's made in second for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brusher.
I'll make a motion to hold the discussion on 1615 so they don't have to stay. Comcast.
1415?
No, the next one, next page. 1615, so they don't have to stick around. That one.
What, why are we holding that discussion?
Because that's part of the other discussion.
No, these, these are...
These, these are...
So we want to talk about the hoods tonight on top of this?
Yes, I, yes, believe me, there was a request to do this and I'm not keen upon holding it. And I think there, maybe some more information will come forward. Let's just see where this goes respectfully. I think, I think the board members are saying the same thing. So 14-15 Comcast on 1 Montemoy Road.
Good evening, Sarah Alger for the applicant. Just before we get started, I know there were some members who weren't here at the last hearing and maybe one who had to leave and I wanted to make sure that they had read back in and had filed the appropriate paperwork. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And that, that's really all I have. I'm going to turn it over to Paul to walk through our revised plan, which by the way, we, we will need to present to the, to the county, so we're not at the end of the road here by any stretch. But we did want to just run this by and see what your thoughts on it were.
Thank you. Well, I think Mr. Santos here has got some stuff for us to review and I'm sure he'll walk us through it. walk us through it.
Okay, thank you for the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors on behalf of Comcast of Massachusetts, Inc. The applicant before you tonight, just as a refresher, this is an MCD application for the existing Comcast site located at the intersection of Monomoy Road and Milestone Road. The plan that I just handed out is the same as the board that's in front of me here to the left. So for those of you in the audience here, Monomoy Road is in this direction here, Milestone Road is here, and then this brown is the existing Comcast building. So we filed an MCD application for specifically, to address some concerns that have been raised by abutters within the Monomoy Road area with regard to the current operation of the Comcast site. Specifically, the entry and exit of commercial vehicles at this point here. There's a curb cut along Monomoy Road here. The customer parking is in this area, right in this area here. So what we did last month was presented a plan to the board in order to close off the Monomoy Road entrance, provide a buffering, additional landscaping and buffering along the Monomoy Road streetscape, provided landscape in this area here, provided no parking signs, and provided a curb along Monomoy Road in order that cars would not be able to park along the edge of the Monomoy Road pavement, between the edge of the pavement and the actual site. So we consolidated and closed up this entrance here, made it visually more attractive for cars traveling down Monomoy Road and also for the abutters along the north side of Monomoy Road. We did also provide some reallocation of the customer parking area and provided some landscaping at that customer entrance also. In doing so, there was some resistance from the board or some questions were raised with regard to altering the existing customer parking lot and also the fact that we had proposed here on the last month's meeting, an exit and entrance out onto Milestone Road. This was designed as a 20-foot wide entrance and exit for commercial vehicles only, for the Comcast trucks that park in the back here. And then the customer parking area would simply act, again, as it does today. At the time, I brought up the fact that, the fact, you've got a unique situation here is here's the property line here of the property. You have a county layout, unoccupied here, Milestone Road, and then you have the state layout. So there's actually a 45 to 50-foot strip, I believe, here of unoccupied county layout before you get to the street line of the state highway layout in which we were proposing the connection. Commissioner Mocklinger at the time brought up a point and asked us to potentially explore in order to not have this connection out to Milestone Road, which in fact would require a state DPW curb cut permit because Milestone Road is a state highway. There was also some questions about access for the trucks dumping out on the Milestone Road and said, "Look at maybe a connection within the county layout to connect Monomoy Road to the back parking area." And then that's what this plan to the left of me does and also the plans that you have in front of you. So what we've done here is left the customer parking area essentially intact and created a 16-foot wide, instead of a 20-foot wide, access driveway that would provide entrance and exit for the commercial vehicles at the back of the, back of the property. This application here would need approval, as Sarah had said, from the county commissioners with regard to the construction of this driveway. Some form of license would have to be entered into, we believe, with regard to that driveway there. The plan still does accomplish what we wanted to try to do here with regard to the abutters along Monomoy, along this streetscape. We have also buffered this back area here along the southern property line. There's an existing residential home in that area that's being currently renovated and would provide buffering along that back property line here, provided the buffering along Monomoy. This area is fairly well wooded, so we haven't provided any additional buffering in there. So... Yes, and we've actually provided some re-landscaping down here at the triangle between Monomoy and Milestone at that intersection. So I think we've left the customer parking area essentially intact. Remember that these cars coming in, trucks coming in and out of here are typically in the morning, maybe later in the afternoon when the servicemen come in, get their assignments. We've addressed the issue of not going out to Milestone Road and we think we've, you know, not tried to play around with the customer service area at all. Be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Yep. Good.
I'm shaking my head. I'm having a problem creating a problem where there isn't a problem. This whole complex predates the one neighbor across the street, and it's not the Taylors, that's having a problem looking at a parking lot. I am not creating a mess for one person who built a house 18 months ago. Not my problem. He looks right in it, he does, but I don't care.
Mr. Chairman, if we could not talk about one individual person...
Well, that's why it was presented the last time.
It was not.
Two, two times ago.
It was not.
I asked.
It was not.
And I'm not interested in him right now. What I'm interested in is causing a problem that doesn't exist at the moment, except that that parking lot needs to be laid out because as we all know, it's kind of chaotic when they get in, the guys get in there with the trucks. I did say it the last time when I was sitting on it, that I think regularizing that parking lot is a great idea, but causing another problem and surrounding this structure with hard pack as opposed to the screening that it has where you're putting the proposed driveway is not my idea from another hat point of view where I think that's appropriate. Number one. Number two, that driveway is coming in and out right where those people who have limited visibility now, the customers, are backing out around that corner right now to get out. So essentially, they're backing into something where they can't see a truck coming out and they can't see the truck, the truck can't see them if they're backing into that. Because right now, we all back into that corner to K-turn to get out. None of us back into Monomoy Road most of the time, especially in the summer. So I'm still not satisfied that the customer parking is going to have enough visibility or room, and now they're backing into two-way traffic. That's not happy for me. And now you've got this big thing cut into the town layout. I don't care about town layout or not county layout. But you're surrounding the structure, which is more detrimental to the visual impact on Monomoy Road than leaving the screening, which is pretty uptight against that right side of the building at the moment. Now we're cutting this whole 16-foot wide driveway? I, I'm flummoxed by this whole thing. I'm back to where I was the last time, the time before that, that I think fixing the parking lot is great, regularizing it, making regular parking spaces, screening that parking lot, it's had some problems with screening over time. But I am not in favor of this solution at all, and I wasn't in favor of them coming straight out onto Milestone Road. You sound just great, Sarah.
Thank you.
Hope you feel better. But I'm not in favor of either one of these at all. I'm in favor of leaving the existing opening, but fixing the screening so it's better and regularizing that parking lot. That's it for me. I've had a problem with this whole thing from the beginning. So I don't really have any questions. I see.
Anyone else on the board?
Could we just address that?
Definitely like to take a sec, yeah.
I would just, I would just like to take a second. I'm personally not happy about targeting any particular neighbor or neighbors in this particular situation. I think Comcast, as a good neighbor, is attempting to address a situation that I think we can honestly say over the years has been allowed to creep probably a lot further than it should have. There was never a second curb cut approved by this board. So we basically did, this commercial use has, has grown over time, and I think it's in Comcast's best interest and in the neighborhood's interest for us to try to kind of bring it into line and beautify it a little bit. So one of the things that I think is important is closing up that second curb cut where the trucks currently come in and out on the Monomoy Road so that we just have one access point in and out. There is no screening currently on that entire, I guess you would call that the southerly side of the property.
North.
Here, is this north?
Where are we talking about?
Here.
That's the northern.
Oh, okay. North on the bottom, okay, tricky. Along the north. So I think closing that up and screening there is really important. We don't have considerable amount of truck traffic. There are approximately 12 trucks that park, commercial trucks that park in the back. They go out, they tend to come, everybody comes in in the morning, they get their work orders for the day, they head out, maybe they come back at noon time, but for the most part, they're out for the day, then they come back at the end of the day. So I don't think we're creating a problem traffic-wise with the customers using the existing parking and backing in and out in that area that we've provided. We can also, and I don't, I know we haven't shown it here, but we'd be happy to create whatever sort of additional screening along that Milestone Road side as was necessary to keep it completely buffered from the Milestone Road view. We're certainly taking care of the neighbor to the, is that the south there at the top?
The woman with the pink door.
Yeah, the woman with the pink door. So I think it's a good compromise plan. I mean, I really think we're trying to meet a lot of different concerns, given the fact that this is an important site. It is the head end for Comcast. It's not like we have the opportunity to just pick up and move anywhere. It's the head end for the entire island operation for both telephone and cable television. So it's a, it's an important facility for Comcast and we'd like to get it permitted properly and in line. We'd like to be a good neighbor to the people on Monomoy, who I think have shown quite a bit of patience, and I think we can do it in a way that's both safe and attractive. And I thought that this was a great plan, so I'm very sorry, Ms. Williams, to hear your comments tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. McGlaughlin.
I only have one comment, not to belabor it. This plan, according to what I see here, shows 16-foot, we'll say, road going to the back of the property. And I think this is a commitment of this board, as a planning board, also transportation, which the previous plan I spoke against, putting all that traffic on Milestone Road as it was, if you drove in, you couldn't get out. And I think, I think this plan's a lot better. I would, if the selectmen want to run, run that road down there, that's their business, but I think that'll solve the problem of getting any problems on Milestone Road. It's the worst place they'd ever want to put it, right on top of that hill. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm going to turn to staff first, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to acknowledge that I did meet with the applicants and I do think that this plan addressed at least the earlier set of concerns, especially the, the direct access to Milestone Road. And you should know, further along Milestone Road, we've actually yard-sailed out some of the, this excess right-of-way, so further to the north. This is an area we would probably retain the right-of-way and that's why the license makes sense. So if the, if it is ever needed for road purposes, then there could be whatever adjustments in the event that the county commissioners grant it. I did have two questions, if I may, through you.
Please.
One thing we didn't talk about in our meeting is the grade changes that might be necessary for the road. Do you see a big impact along that particular area, retaining walls, anything like that?
No, there's no need for retaining walls. This is a small, low area here in the corner here, but this area here, you can see the contouring coming up through that area. It's not a significant grade change at all to come through that area.
Great. And then my other question, Mr. Chairman, is along Monomoy Road itself, where we have the dashed edge of pavement, I don't see any curbs or anything that might be placed out there. There's sort of curbing around the round landscaping area.
The landscape plan is more, which I didn't update for tonight's meeting, but the landscape plan does clearly depict a curb, you know, that this would be curbed to try to keep the cars from parking off on that shoulder area.
So there would be installation of curbing essentially at the edge of the pavement that would tie into that curbing around the green area?
Yes, well, this, what we're talking about right here, Sarah, is, is curbing here because rather than just posting a sign that says no parking, without the curb, we don't think it's going to be effective. So that's why, that would be curbed, yes. And then landscaped in that area.
So that, Mr. Chairman, just...
Yes, please.
So the existing asphalt would be removed in that particular area?
Well, it would be cut enough to place the curbing, you know, the curbing typically is going to be placed in concrete, or if it's a bitumis curb, it's going to be extended out in that area, yes.
And there would be landscaping replacing that current entrance, is that the idea?
Correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Go ahead.
I was just questioning whether they had...
...covered the two curb cuts, this year might show that they did, because they're actually going in and out of the road layout, so they've actually got two new curb cuts going into the county layout, going out, coming down, coming back in. So I was just concerned that they hadn't asked for that and they have asked for that. I would want to see...
I'd want to see a screening plan for sure because all this is coming to the HDC. But you're not impinging upon that opening that is already the three space, the three customer spaces?
Correct. Correct.
That still is a nightmare? Is there any way to add another space or enlarge that on your property?
Yeah, I think, right here, Linda, and what I've tried to do is, what I've tried to show is state on the property, but we know what really happens out there. Like here, I mean, cars actually, a car typically will park here, but it's outside the layout, so I didn't want to show it. Then typically what you have is, you'll notice, I think the manager backs his little truck...
Yeah, to the right of the building.
And he tucks it back in there.
Yeah.
If we can do away with that and get him back here, then it could be four space, you know, he could typically, potentially get, you know, four, and again, I laid out a handicap space in there where there's not a handicap space.
It's not on the ground.
Not on the ground, but I mean, that's, so you could probably have four spaces there. But you're absolutely right. What typically happens is, here's the road layout, here's the edge of pavement, these cars that come in here, you know, back their way here and then either loop around or they back, you know, they kind of just work their way, but they're working their way into the layout. I've just tried to stay within the confines of the property on what we're showing for spaces. But yeah, there is space here for an additional space, you know? And then this is a clear sight for these guys coming out. And when Sarah said, you know, this is controlled as far as when they come in and out, and typically it's before the customer services is, I'm assuming is going to be open.
So on customer service hours, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00, and on summer, in the summer, they go 8:30 to 12:30.
So I'm sure, I don't know whether or not those drivers are out before that time or not, but...
No, they go 8:30 to 12 on Saturday.
So...
And just keep in mind that you're opening up all the propane tanks, everything to full view, so you're going to have to come up with something.
Well, yeah, it is, there is a pretty, fairly, there is some pines in this area that is screened, but we'll look at the, you know, we've got a landscape architect that expanded on this plan. We'll have them look at that area and completely screen that complete area over there.
Yeah, because if you're going to the selectmen to get access in and out of there, then that's got to be part of your presentation to the selectmen, is that you're going to be planting in the road layout also.
Yeah. And as you said, this is where all the, you know, all their outdoor mechanical stuff is being tucked, is back in that area right there.
I, you have one handicap spot, Mr. Santos, and you have one regular spot in the front in front of the building?
Yes.
For customers? And how much of a problem do you think it'll be to get the access in the right-of-way for Milestone Road? Is that, like you said, Mr. Forrest, is that a license or is that a...
Oh, we're talking about this here?
Yeah.
Oh, for the county commissioners?
Yeah.
Oh, we think that's a, I defer to Sarah on that, but I think it's a valid request.
Okay. And I, I like the landscaping on the north side and the south side. It looks good to me and I think people will, will miss most of the traffic coming out of the, the trucks coming out. So I like this, I think it looks good.
Thank you. Chairman? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Paul, I listened intensely to this tape of this public hearing. I mean, it's a good plan for something that is a bad situation. The building's in the wrong place. I mean, the whole thing needs to be blown up and started over, but that's not going to happen.
Or moved.
Or moved or somewhere else. I mean, that was sort of my question. I mean, you guys are making a significant improvement. I mean, are we staying here? I mean, is this, this could be the next neighbor complaining about the other neighbor someday. You know what I mean? I'm just saying...
Well, there's a significant amount of money that they have in this building. I mean, this, this, the electronics...
I know.
And here, it's the head end...
It's the heart of the island, it's right there.
That's right. It's all the cable, it's the alarm systems, it's the, it's, there's a significant amount of work that's been put in just in this, because the building itself is just a small customer area. You've got the driver area, and the majority of this building is all the electronics.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm fine with it. I mean, it's the only thing you can do, other than getting rid of that. If there was a way to get rid of the parking where people pull over when it is busy, because that's kind of what happens, gets a little bit busy...
Yeah.
And people are kind of all over the place there, because they do have to back up. And if there was a way to get rid of that ability to do that, you could theoretically leave the rest of it open, but it's, this is better. I mean, Paul, this is a better plan. I'm just thinking about you as a, you know, going through all this work. I mean, this is it. I mean, you're not going to be able to make it any better than this.
Yeah.
You know? So...
Yeah, I mean, because I don't think we can run, we can't take these cars and put them back here.
No.
It doesn't make any sense, and it's just...
It works to back up and turn around to the left, because the road is so wide.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, the pavement is here, so it does work. I mean, typically, what you'll get, you may even have four or five cars parked across here, and then they just work their way back this way and kind of come out. Yeah, it's, if it was a new site, we couldn't do it that way, but it is, that's how it really kind of functions right now. But what we're trying to do here is at least soften that component of it, try to keep them off the street, because I don't think it's just sometimes, I think, it may even be, it's not just customers are parking up here, I think sometimes the trucks may even pull over.
Yeah.
And the guys come in, instead of driving in there, they park over here, and then they go into the building, and that's kind of what we want to stop is what's happening here. This, we just got to, I guess we got to live with it, and as Linda had said, I mean, I fully understand the issue you have here, but you've got at least a controlled drivers coming in and out of here who know what they're dealing with at this intersection. It's not like you have a customer who's going to pull back in here and then barrel out and not pay attention to what's going on here.
Yeah.
Everybody that's coming and using this is going to be employees only.
What's going to stop the public from trying to go up there?
Well...
Thinking it's a parking lot for them.
Yeah. I mean, we'll put a sign up, and you know it'll happen nothing.
That's...
So, you know, I mean...
All right. That's good. Thank you.
So, Mr. Santos, I agree with my peers. I think you're going to need to do something along that milestone area in terms of some type of...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. You know, the other thing to think about is, I keep hearing everyone saying, Monomoy Road, everyone's going to pack out into it. All of a sudden, when you opened up that driveway along Monomoy, I might not be tempted to do that. I might actually try to put my car into reverse and use that as part of it.
You're talking here?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I mean...
You know, I don't think that, I think people are going to find their own natural way out of this.
Right.
You know, and maybe just a little realignment of those two or three spaces may help, may help just to factor that in a bit. It's just something to think about.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, does this really, does that green space that's there provide anything other than an obstruction, and maybe we just deal with this all as paving here and then kind of go with it that way? I mean, we're already, it's an MCD. I think I had originally this 26% open space on the site right now.
Yeah.
We were proposing 26%. Under this scenario, we lose three, so now I'm already asking for a waiver down to 23. I mean, that's not going to change it that much, so...
But, yeah, I mean, for the sake of that little triangular area, as far as I'm concerned...
Yeah, do away with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One member of the board, I don't, I don't see the function behind it, if you can get better traffic control in there.
Yeah, yeah. And like I said, the only thing that's coming back in now is, I said, he tucks, the manager tucks his little pickup right up in there right now.
But there's no earthly reason why he can't go in back...
No, no.
If we can figure that to something much better.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just a little bit of thought, I think, that may work, and that's just one member of the board saying that. But I do have to say, I have to commend you. I think you've taken something, and Comcast is trying to make it better than what it was, so I will say that I think you've come a far stretch here.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think it's, in all turn, I think it's, the best we can really do with it, and quite honestly, you know, Joe's suggestion was the whole connection here, and really, that's what's making this kind of work the way it is. So, I mean, that's really what's driven to where we are, and I think at the end of the day, it's the best solution we can come up with.
No, I was thrilled he came up with that at the last meeting. That was a really good suggestion, which, you know, he did, that's what I said. Yeah, I'm singing his praises at this point. Okay, I won't say much more. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. I see Mr. Cohen has had his hand up, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephen Cohen, I represent more than a dozen of the abutters, not just one guy across the street, and have also been asked to attend on behalf of the Monomoy Civic Association, which probably has many more members than that. The thing that I think that's important to remember here is that this is not an MCD only. It is a expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, and I think, Linda, essentially of all people, you would be the first to recognize that, and the power is test applicability here, and that it's not a member, it's not a matter of, you know, what's the best way to do this, it's a matter of what satisfies the law in order for this use to be maintained. I think at the last hearing, your pipe burst at your house, and you ran out before we were able to discuss some of the issues involved, but the planning board and, the zoning board and building department file for this property clearly show that in 1972, it was a garage for a bus, and there's three enforcement orders saying, "Don't park your bus outside, you're not allowed to," and a failed application at the zoning board in the '70s to try and change that. So, anything essentially that's not a bus parked in a garage is not allowed on this site. So, the fact that there is a dozen commercial vehicles or more parked all around it, that there's retail use, that there's all kinds of expansion, is not compliant with the zoning, because as you know, it's never been a commercially zoned site. That said, the neighbors are willing to cooperate and support an application, and I think what we are, really close to a successful application of allowing a remarkably significant expansion of the, of the non-conforming commercial uses in a way that mitigates the nuisances as required by law. There's basically no scenario where you, where what's happening there now continues, because there are people who would bring an enforcement action against that, but I think this is a very successful direction that we're heading to try and mitigate all of those uses and get to a place where both it's acceptable to the neighborhood and it's acceptable to the board, and it makes sense for traffic safety, and it beautifies the area. But it's not really just about making it look nice for the abutter across the street, it's about mitigating nuisances under the statute and under the, as required by case law. So, I want to be clear for the record that that's what we're talking about here. So, my clients are supportive of the direction that this is going. Obviously, I think that adding some screening on the milestone roadside, to the extent that it might, the natural vegetation might need some supplementing, is a good idea, but this is definitely heading in the right direction, and I'm glad to see the applicant putting a lot of effort into it. And I'd like to thank the board for its suggestion at the last meeting that has led to a more successful attempt.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this? Not hearing anything, I think it would be appropriate to continue this. They've got a little more work they need to do in terms of landscaping and stuff, and maybe trying to, unless staff feels very differently about it, I think that really should come before us again.
I'll make a motion to continue to June 8th.
Yeah. Motion's being seconded. For discussion, hearing none. All those here, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got Brotherhood redo.
Okay, so this is 16-15 Brotherhood of Peas on 23 Broad Street to reopen the public hearing, but just, before you start, Leslie Andrew, is there anything that we need to focus on that we already have here? No, okay, thank you, I appreciate it, Rod.
Thank you. For the record, Rod Weinman, I represent the abutters of the Brotherhood. As I think you recall, we were advised at the last meeting, in the March meeting, that we could reopen the public hearing for the MCD that was approved by this board and to discuss restriction number 13, which was the issue at hand. And just to refresh your recollection, the restriction in pertinent parts states that the applicant conduct a biannual cleaning of the ventilation system, and the most important part to us is that the system is vented as high as possible above the north roof line of the kitchen structure. At the previous meeting, I entered several photos into the record showing that the existing system is not vented as high as possible above the roof line and is not vented upward. Because of the way that the system is vented, it's causing my clients to suffer from continuous noise and odors, because it is not pointed upward as it was required to be. The system must be redirected upward, as stated in the original conditions, and if this isn't possible, the system must be replaced to be in compliance with the condition that was opposed when the MCD was first approved. Please, when you look at this application, consider the residential neighborhood that's behind the restaurant, and it is a totally residential neighborhood. These families deserve to enjoy time outside of their homes and not to be forced to endure the noise and odors that are a result of a system that does not comply with what was originally approved by this board. My clients are willing to meet with the representative from the Brotherhood and discuss this. I think that that would be something that would be beneficial for all parties, but ultimately, I would like to ask this board to render a decision with a definitive timeline. We want to make sure that there is a timeline established as part of this decision, which the Brotherhood must comply with by either putting in a new system, which would comply with the venting that was required initially, or to at least create a system that's in place now that would improve and do away with the odor and with the noise that my clients have been forced to endure for several years now. I'm not sure whether that's possible, but if it isn't, then we would ask that you ask them to put in a new system that's in compliance with the original decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members? Do you want to hear from Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Attorney John Brescher, I think all of that is correct. We are, my task from my client is to gather names, email addresses, and phone numbers in order to meet with the neighbors this week to discuss this. In doing so, figure out plan of attack, figure out a timeline, and figure out a reasonable course of solution here. As I said, we want to work with the neighbors. We think that this problem is not going away until we get everyone on the same page, and I think we're trying to take steps in order to do that, and we plan on meeting them this week. One other thing, again, do you want to discuss any of the ongoing fan maintenance at this time, or do you want to wait, or I suppose we can see what the abutters say once we meet with them as well?
It may be prudent, I don't know, we'll see what the rest of the board thinks. I think it may be prudent for you to meet with them so that they understand current condition that you have right now, and then come back to the board with any modification that you feel is necessary with them, but let me just see what the other board members are thinking. Go ahead.
I think we talked about the last time, the fact that you cannot take it down or extend it now, it's too late. But you were, they were going to undergo the maintenance of it, because it had started to rattle, and it really got beat up over the winter on top of it, and substantial number of loud noises. I think we all pretty much understood the last time that without shutting down the Brotherhood for quite a while, we couldn't take it down and replace it or extend it until the fall. But I knew that they were going to undertake the maintenance of it, I think, in April or May. Is that happening at the moment?
Yes, it is.
And that should lessen some of the rattling, and the belts get replaced or tightened, that should help some of it, because it was vibrating pretty good. So, I think what they're doing right now will get it through the summer, hopefully. I don't see anything, any way to do anything else to it until the fall, but it is part of all the noise mitigation, because not only would the 20-seats need to be mitigated, but the fan is going to have to be mitigated. So, we've got a general noise problem on the site that we're trying to solve. But I think if you wanted to explain what you're doing, I think you did earlier, what you're doing now to get it through the summer and lessen the impact, I think that's where, that's the only place we can go at the moment. Because they do have to fix it.
Would you like, would you like to hear that now?
And they have to comply to get that up, to add the extension to it.
For the record, you might as well then, just so it's there, but again, too, I think when you deal with the neighbors, that's where you're going to make a significant impact.
Again, what are, what we do as far as maintenance, twice a year, cleaning, and then we have, and it will happen this week, as far as redoing the belts, checking and making sure that everything's lubricated appropriately, and making sure that everything's tight, so that nothing is, nothing is excessive as rattling, and that is part of our ongoing process of when the hoods are cleaned twice a year, we will do the same thing with the belts. All right?
Thanks. Board members, is there anything? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. McLaughlin.
To the staff, a question on this. How long has this situation been the way it is without being high enough or whatever the condition is? Can I get an answer to that? Oh, Ms. Weinman, do you have a comment? I'd like how long this problem's been going on.
My understanding is it's been going on for several years. I do have a few letters that were sent in, in the last year or so, but I think there've been several complaints that have been made on a periodic basis to the restaurant itself. My clients have called, complained, and nothing has ever been done about it. I know there was a complaint to the police department last summer, and I think that it's been an ongoing problem, and they've tried to be good neighbors and pretty much endure it, but I think it's reached the point now where we really need to do something about it.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin, go ahead. I'll open the public hearing in a few moments.
The police were called last summer, and within hours, that problem was fixed, as soon as I was made aware of it. I have not gotten a single phone call from any of the neighbors in this last year. I may not answer the phone every single time. You hit number two, and it goes right to my voicemail. I will respond within 24 hours.
Thank you. Board, staff, is there anything else on this?
No.
No, no, no. Okay, so, did you have something else?
Was Mr. McLaughlin asking when the fans were constructed, when the vents were constructed?
No. How, when was the last time they were cleaned?
Well...
Good question I have.
Last month.
If it's a violation, I'd like to know how long it's been going on.
In terms of, did you get your answer, sir?
Yeah. Or raising them, yes. Maybe getting them higher would keep the noise out of the neighbors. I like to listen to neighbors when they have a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the public hearing is open at this point. Mr. Ford, you had your hand up first, please. You had your hand up first, yeah, so I'll recognize you, sir.
I think we made it clear at the, at the last couple of meetings here, well, particularly at the last meeting, that we really didn't, we didn't realize that there was a, an existing, one of the requirements of the existing special permit was that the venting be above roof level, and we didn't know that. And, you know, as I think I said at the time, we understand that ignorance is, you know, is no excuse, but we certainly didn't know. And, you know, when it came up as a part of the, their request for another special permit, I mean, certainly, the first special permit ought to, they ought to be in compliance with that, one would think, and that's the context in which it was raised. The first letter I wrote to the board back in December, in response to their request for the special permit, I indicated that there was, you know, noxious smells and the noise that was coming from that system. And I said at the time that, you know, we understood that we were probably stuck with the situation as it existed, but we didn't think that we should, the problem should be exacerbated by giving them another, another extension of the, of the patio. But we didn't know at that time that they were in, that they were not in compliance. And the problem has gone on long before the current manager, and, you know, certainly we will start making these calls on a daily basis to let him know whenever there's a problem there. But for the past several months, we've been involved in this process here. So yes, there have been problems, but, you know, no, we haven't been making, making complaints to the Brotherhood. We felt we were dealing with that situation in this venue. But again, we're very happy to meet with the owners of the Brotherhood. It's in all of our interests that this get resolved. We're not, we're not trying to have them tear down buildings or anything like that. We want the problem resolved, that's all.
Great. And I see Mr. Brescher shaking his head up there, agreeing with you about trying to meet, so. Yes. He's shaking his head in a positive manner. How's that? Okay? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Diane Graber at Four Ash Street, and to set the record straight, I did call three times in the summer of last, last summer. And also, I'm the one that called the police. I talked directly to the manager, I'm not sure if it were you, on one occasion, and left two other messages, so. It did happen.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Question, a comment?
I've been up here before. That's my wife. I'm Charlie Graber, and I don't know you, and you obviously don't know me, but I'm not a hysterical. I'm really not. But I, as I heard some of the information unfold this evening, which I did not know, it occurred to me that it's an obligation, at least to point out this potential issue, and that's that if you take meat and you put it on a hot plate or a grill, it generates hydrocarbons and nitro, nitrosalamines, and you can read this at the NIH if you wish to. It's readily known. And in animals, the high concentrations of those substances cause cancer. The FDA is not ready to say that it's absolutely cause and effect, but epidemiologically, the more hamburgers you eat, the more prostate cancer you get, the more colon cancer you get, and the more pancreatic cancer we get. And so that's why these vents are so important for the cooks. But these vents, I just found out, are venting directly into, potentially directly into a child's room. So this is an issue of urgency, as far as I'm concerned. If that were my child, I would close the window. I'm not sure that the window is enough. These are gases. I mean, you know, I, you know, I, if, do you have centerware? Yes, she's not here. Oh, you do.
I can see it.
Yeah, so, I mean, there are days when the window has to be open.
Except if you don't open it.
Well, I just --
Mr. Graber, I'll ask you to register your comments through a man.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this? Board members, I think that the applicant's --
June 8th.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue this to June 8th.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes, aye in unanimous. Thank you. Next thing before us is 1750, which is the Clark Brothers Realty LLC on 20 Tomahawk Road. Good evening.
Good evening. Victoria Ewing for the applicant. So this is now, as you know from town meeting, moved to the planning board from the zoning board. This is similar to many of the buildings that are currently approved and out there and built already. Just under, just over 2,000 square feet, planning, open space, screening has all been accounted for, and we believe we've got the parking all accounted for as well.
Okay. Board members, any discussion on this? Anything from staff? Yeah, Leslie, please.
I have a question. The staff report says that they're proposing to construct a commercial building to be used as a contractor shop and warehouse with interior storage and an office in conjunction with the operation of a construction business. So the contractor shop allows for an ancillary office and for interior storage and maintenance of vehicles and equipment, but it doesn't allow for any light manufacturing. So like a carpentry shop would not be allowed. So I want to confirm that's not what your client's asking for.
Okay, we should clarify that. So contractor shop does not include, it's not light manufacturing?
No. It's a separate use.
That's a separate use. That's what I saw.
That requires a separate special permit.
So the contractor shop could not be any form of cutting or preparing or building?
Correct.
So what would it be defined as then, if it's not a contractor shop?
The, we have a separate use for light manufacturing that allows your typical carpenter shop. The contractor use designation allows for a contractor's office, a contractor's storage of materials and equipment, but not active carpentry.
So it sounds like we should switch to light manufacturing?
Yes. And then the other question was, are you proposing any exterior storage, or is it all interior?
No, all interior, and not much of it at that, just mostly deliveries that go in and out, and no interior storage of vehicles.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we need to renotice?
I was just going to head to that direction. I think we may have to because of change.
Yeah.
Change in use.
Yeah. Okay. I believe, yes. I mean, we can, do we have the file with us?
We have the file, but she would have to renotice for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, so if it wasn't advertised, then yes, we'll have to renotice. So it would have to be continued to the June meeting. Okay.
Should I just make that motion right now? It's not properly, it's not fully before us.
Yeah, I agree with you at this point. Is there anything else from the board or the staff very quickly? Yeah, no, I agree. I think you, you're absolutely right. We need to renotice this. It's not fully before us at this point in the public hearing. Without that full notification, it's a little troubling, so.
I'll make a motion to continue to June 8th to allow it to be properly noticed with the proper relief.
And do I hear a second to that? Motion's now made in second.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
She just thanked us.
You have a question for me?
All those, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes, aye unanimously. Thank you. Next thing before us at this point is 1820, which is Marco Banyan on 10 Rose, I'm sorry, 10 Rosemary Way. Okay, duly noted. Can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
Do these follow the special permits, Inspector? Are they just simply before a majority vote? This is kind of new to me.
They're still special permits. They require a supermajority vote.
Majority of the board, thank you.
But they're not subject to major site plan review. They're only subject to minor site plan review.
Just wanted to be clear. So Mr. Portret, you are duly on this. Good evening.
Mr. Director, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
Good. Is there anything you have before us, or do you want me just to turn it over to this group and see what it is?
I guess turn it over to the group. I'm not really sure what I'm supposed to be saying.
All right, no, that's fine. Board members, do you have anything you want to comment on this application?
Just, just an explanation from staff, Mr. Chairman, as to exactly what, you know, this was a ZBA permit, and we're sort of, what are we exactly doing, Leslie?
Okay, so because of the passage of Article 68, a town meeting, any modifications to ZBA special permits for commercial use now come before the planning board.
Okay.
So he's requesting to modify the previously issued special permit, which was issued by the ZBA, to, to allow light manufacturing in addition to just the contractor shop, and to allow interior and exterior storage and warehousing, and to allow two residential dwelling units on the second floor. The ZBA permit allowed for one.
Okay. This is in RC 2.
It's still in RC 2, yes. All parking will be provided on the site. So it's a pretty straightforward application.
Does that help?
It's good. All good.
Anyone else on the board have any questions? Anything from staff? Andrew, Leslie, do you have anything? No. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this? Seeing no comments from --
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Motion's now made in second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You're on this, yeah, yeah. So that's a unanimous vote by the board. Motion, it's the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve the notification signed in the office.
Okay.
A second.
Motion's now made in second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes, aye unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
This is for the office, all right, lady?
Okay, so the next thing before us at this point is 19-20, which is Nantucket Commons Condo Amendment at 7C Bayberry Court. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Representing the applicant.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Still wearing a vest from Florida.
Yeah.
What we have before the board is an application for a modification of a previously issued MCD special permit. My client, the applicant owns Unit 7.3 in Building 7 of Nantucket Commons, recently acquired in the fall of 2014. That particular unit was originally, the use ascribed to that unit was for office space, and I think most board members were aware that MetLife was in that, was at that location. Charlie Kilbert's business. My client owns Wayne Alarm Systems. As I say, he acquired it recently. The zoning was changed last July from office to residential, and the client's seeking a change of use for a mixed use of office and residential. As part of the application materials, I approached the Nantucket Commons Board of Managers and asked for their, their approval of this mixed use, and they, in fact, granted that, and it's a certificate that's on record. So a portion of, a small portion of this 1,300-square-foot unit would be used for office, and the remainder would be for residential use for the, in part, the employees of Wayne Alarm Systems.
Okay. Great, thank you. Board members, any questions?
Duncan?
Anything? Leslie, Andrew? Nothing. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this? Seeing no comments from --
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes.
Motion to approve. Don't move. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Ayes, aye unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next thing before us at this point is 20-15 Paul M. Roberts, 21 Old South Road. Ms. Alger, Ms. Santos, I believe you're up for this?
Yes. It's true. Sarah Alger for the applicant, with me, Paul Santos from the Nantucket Surveyors, also Matt McKecon from Emeritus, who's our architect, and the two principals, my clients, John and Sean Reedy from the vineyard.
Great.
So let me just tell you briefly what this proposal is. This is for the site right at the corner of Old South Road and Amelia Drive. It's 21 Old South Road. It's a corner lot. We're proposing to build a two-story building of about 5,000, just under 5,000 square feet on the ground floor for use as a, as a market, and maybe one other retail, one other separate smaller retail use. We'd also are proposing a total of four apartments, each having two bedrooms, so eight, eight bedrooms of apartment in four apartments. The market is kind of a, well, just, just like an old-fashioned market would be, meats, fish, vegetables, beverages. We're proposing a small amount of wine and beer as part of, as part of the market, prepared foods, deli, and that, that sort of grocery use. My clients currently operate the Egger Town Meat and Fish Market in Egger Town, and they're proposing a similar sort of market here. And I think with, with that, I'll give it over to Paul, who has all the details, sort of ins and outs of parking, and, and my clients are also here to answer any questions you might have or to expand on any aspect of the use of the property. The apartments would be on the second floor, commercial, total commercial use on the first floor. We had thought at one point of having some apartment use on the first floor, but that's not part of the current proposal.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. For the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors on behalf of the applicant. So as Sarah had mentioned, the site is located at the intersection of Amelia Drive and Old South Road. It is a vacant parcel of land that is currently owned by Paul Roberts DDS LLC, and as you all know, Dr. Roberts' office is sitting right here, was developed back in 2005 or 2006, I believe, in which Mr. Roberts uses the facility for his dental office. There is an existing curb cut with parking associated with the dental office right there. So the site itself is not located with any flood zone area. It's not located with any wetland area. There is public water in sewer and underground electric telephone cable, all located within Amelia Drive and Old South Road and available to service the particular parcel. The lot area itself is 18,546 square feet. It's located within the CN, or Commercial Neighborhood, zoning district, and it is also located within the Public Wellhead Overlay District. The proposal itself is for a building with approximately 27% ground cover, which is a footprint of approximately 5,000 square feet located along the Old South Road streetscape. That streetscape includes Old South Road. There is a bus stop, near the bus stop right here in front of the site. You have Amelia Drive in this area here, and this red area here is an existing sidewalk that ends at this particular point here at the bus stop. The proposal will be to extend that sidewalk further down to this area here, and then utilize the sidewalk at a front, front entry off of Old South Road at the bus stop, and then create a paved parking lot to the southerly portion of the site with a brick walk along this building scape here, and then also a outdoor brick patio along the westerly side of the property itself. The proposal itself that you see before you utilizes a common driveway scheme with Dr. Roberts' property here. Majority, if not all, of the buildings within the Amelia Drive do utilize this type of setup. The subdivision was set up with initially driveway easements for the majority of the commercial uses within the, the subdivision itself. So this does utilize a common driveway access in and out of both Dr. Roberts' site and the proposed market site here. That access being located in this vicinity here along Amelia Drive. The parking space requirement that's set forth on the site plan is as follows. The Retail A, which would be the market space, we're looking at following under Stores and Services with a net sales area of about 1,800 square feet, open to the public within the, the market itself. At one space per 200, we're looking at about nine spaces. Retail B, which would be a small retail component located in this section of the building here, approximately 850 square feet of retail space. At one per 200, you're looking at about four spaces. 10 employees total for the site between the two retail uses at peak shift, so at one per three, you're looking at three spaces for the employees. And then the apartments are allocated at one space per bedroom, per the requirement. We're talking about four units, two bedrooms, so eight bedrooms would be eight spaces for a total requirement of 24 spaces. That requirement is met with 12 spaces on the interior, five spaces along the, the building facade here, two handicap spaces, and five spaces over here. Dr. Roberts' spaces are not used in any way to calculate the compliance with the proposed site. Dr. Roberts' spaces stay in compliance as he has them now, which is a series of standard spaces, the handicap space, and then another set of standard spaces along that line right in there. The proposal itself with regard to access, we have entrance and exit, open 22-foot-wide aisle here, 22-foot-wide aisle here, 24 areas here for a complete circulation in this particular vicinity here. We would be looking at rubbish and recycling removal in this particular area here, and then what we've done is left enough space, there's at least 35 feet or so here. It's dimensioned as 30, but that's when the gates are open to the dumpster area, so you've got about 34 to 35 feet here where a truck could be parked in here, in which you'd still have a one-lane access in this particular area here. you'd still have a one-lane access in this particular area here, in which you could load and unload either to the front of the store or to a service entry here. In the off-season, I think we'd probably like to utilize the bus stop area where it's not being used in the off-season. That could be an area that could potentially be used for loading and unloading, although we're not proposing that under this proposal. We are designating an area here, albeit that the loading area requirement, there isn't a specific one, but we have provided a space for loading within that area right there. That area would not block any of these parking spaces, nor would it block this space over here. You'd still have access within that area right there. The proposal itself would need to meet, and we will submit calculations to the town engineer with regard to the fact that we're in the public wellhead recharge, so there does have to be a system, a subsurface drainage system here of recharge, similar to what we did on Dr. Roberts. There is a catch basin in this area which services an underground system here. There'd be a separate system on this lot with an underground system that would be provided for drainage on this particular parcel. Lighting would all be dark sky compliant. We're probably looking at 10 to 12-foot-high standard light poles throughout the, throughout the parking lot and along the building. The deliveries, we spoke about with regard to this back area here, trash recycling, again in that area there. The landscaping itself, any parking lot over 20 spaces does require a run tree per eight spaces. Amelia Drive does have a streetscape tree line along the bank side of here. There are no trees along this streetscape, so what we'd be proposing would be, in addition to the interior landscape, which is this green space, would be street trees potentially along, at least three or four street trees along the Amelia Drive street line to match what's going on across the street on, on Amelia Drive by, in front of the bank. So that would be the one, so basically 24 spaces would be a requirement for three, for three interior trees, plus the whatever landscaping would have, the low-lying landscaping that would occur within the green space areas along the, the street, the two streetscapes. The proposal itself, as I said, ground cover requirement within the CN zoning district is 40%. We're at 27%. It is an MCD application, so the minimum open space requirement would be 30%. Plan that you have in front of you here is purporting to have a, we have asked for a waiver, and we're at 22% under this scenario here for open space. With regard to the application itself, specifically what waivers, both under the site plan and under the zoning code we're looking for, under the site plan, we'd be looking, as I had mentioned, under 13911G1, the open space from 30% to 22%. Screening, because the law has over 20 spaces, the screening requirement is a 10-foot buffer around the property. That would be met along Amelia Drive and Old South Road. However, what we've done here is simply maintain the similar buffer that we have, which is two to three feet or so along the edge of the existing pavement here, and we'd just be asking for that waiver in this particular area here from that 10-foot standard buffer, just to be in compliance with what standard, what is happening along the existing parking lot and to the property to the, to the east. Traffic study requirements under the 13923F2B would be asking for relief for the requirement for filing a traffic study, similar to many of the other commercial uses here. I mean, these are cars that are already on the road. We're typically generating, not generating traffic for the facility, but just basically pulling from existing traffic that's already on the street, so we'd be asking for that waiver request for the traffic study requirement. With regard to the bylaw, specifically 1397, which is the use chart, a market, if you will, is a special permit requirement within this zone, and the alcohol sales are a special permit and for an accessory, as an accessory use only. So under 1397, the use chart for the market and for the alcohol sales. And then additionally, the requirement for the inclusionary housing under 13911J would be seeking a waiver from that specific requirement also. So there'd be the three site plan requirement waivers, and then the two with regard to the bylaw, with regard to the market alcohol sales and the inclusionary housing. All the spaces are the standard nine-by-20. Isle widths are all in excess of the minimum requirement of 20 along the parking areas. That's a 22-foot aisle, that's a 22-foot aisle. I have limited it to 20 feet here and 20 feet here. That's basically the turnaround areas. No parking, no waivers with regard to parking layout, size, and so forth. Minimum requirement, two handicap spaces, those have been shown, and red area is the brick. Shaded here is pavement, green space, and as I did say, we did have that brick patio along that side of the building, along the northerly side of the building there also. Entry along Old South, entry from the parking lot, and a service entry here on the backside of the building also. Be happy to answer any questions that the board may have with regard to the site plan and/or, sorry, Sarah can answer any questions that may have regard to the use.
Sure. Board members?
Good.
You're good? None? No. Anything from staff?
Yeah, I've got a few next to.
I think it would, I think it would make more sense if there was one way into that parking and one way out, instead of two-way all the way around.
Yes, okay.
Since we, since we've reduced the aisle width requirement now.
Yeah.
For practical purposes, it would make a little bit smoother transition if they went in, either went in the first one and out the second one, or went in the second one and out the first one.
Yeah.
Whichever way you think is going to work with the entrance from Amelia Drive, because I think that's kind of essential.
Okay.
And then that space, like we did at Cumby's, should be marked.
Uh, they, this area here?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I think those are the only two things I have.
So I've got a few questions for you. Want to go to second?
Mm-hmm.
Hours of operation?
I'm going to defer to...
We, we haven't specifically discussed hours of operation. Would, would you currently, I'll let Sean answer that.
Sure. Name is Sean Reedy. Hours of operation would be approximately 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
That's seven days a week, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Any cooking on site?
Uh, yes, we have a kitchen for prepared foods inside.
Okay, you do?
Yep.
Because I will want to chat with you probably about your venting situation.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, sure. Make sure we get that right.
Boy, that sounds, is just an echo sometimes on these things, isn't there? Thoughts about providing NRTA passes to your employees?
Yeah, we had talked about that at one point in one of our preliminary meetings.
Contributions maybe to the bike path as well, too, because there's some significant bike path infrastructure that is going to start taking place, not only on Old South Road, but to make some connections as well.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons we like this site, was just because the bike path was there as well, so.
Yeah.
We'll have a bike, bike rack hopefully in the vicinity and...
I'm sorry?
We'll have a bike rack in, on the, on property as well, so.
I'm not sure I'm real keen upon using that bus stop, and here's my reason why. It's, I'm also not going to be real keen on the traffic, letting the traffic study go. I don't think anyone in this room can hardly deny how the traffic situation on Amelia Drive is beyond a level of deterioration. I, I, that, that road is out of control as far as I'm concerned, as one member of this board.
Okay.
I realize the status of the road at this point, but I, I think my concern here is that this structure is going to generate more traffic in terms of people parking to their most convenient spots, or if this area starts getting full, here we go, Amelia Drive becomes the next parking space. So I need you guys to give this some significant thought. This is an opportunity, I think, for this board to revisit and relook at Amelia Drive, which we haven't done in a while, but clearly as one member of this board, it ain't working. It really isn't. It is a traffic nightmare. And I'm not sure what the answer to that will be, or how to get there, but I am going to put forward to staff and to you to, to start maybe visiting that. Um, yeah, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to mention...
Yes, ma'am.
Well, first of all, I don't think we can be expected to cure all the problems that exist on Amelia Drive, but we can be expected to deal with anything that emanates from our site. And I, I just want to say that the experience that the Reedys have had on the Vineyard with a similar-sized market has been that their, their customers come in, they're quick, they buy their dinner, they head out, they don't ever use up the parking spaces that are allocated to them where they are now, and I don't think they're anticipating a parking issue with the 24 spaces that we're providing here.
So are you saying to me at this point that they've got a quote-unquote Amelia Drive that they're facing right now?
No.
No?
No, 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 absolutely not.
All right.
I'm just saying within, within a contained site. No, the Amelia Drive situation is what it is, I think, with or without this, this particular project.
I understand, I, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you on this one. I, I think it is another attractor toward compounding a situation that, that is just not working at the moment.
Yeah.
There are opportunities that come before this board that I think we, as one member, I like to take a serious look at.
Right.
I don't want that opportunity just to slide by saying, you know, and I hope you hear what I'm saying.
No, absolutely, I totally hear you.
I'm not su, it's like I said, I'm not sure I necessarily have the answer to it at the moment, but I do want to pose the question and, and raise that level of concern to my peers about what, what that means for an opportunity to try to address some of these situations on Amelia Drive.
Right.
I think for this board just to turn a blind eye to it and say, "It is what it is," is, is totally irresponsible.
Oh, absolutely.
You know? So I, I just want to be really clear about how, how do we begin to tackle that situation? I do need, I do want to go back and look at the site, and because there's one or two questions I have about that, that small buffer that you have?
Yeah.
That sits in between, yeah, thank you. That, that may need to be increased somehow. But again, I do want to go back and do another site visit. Mr. Santos, where, where you see those white areas in between the brick and, and the green versus, yeah? What's, what's the thought there?
That's actually the chart of the road layout.
Okay.
So that would be, it's green, it's commonly green space.
Okay.
That's right now just the area between this, the actually the limit is the, is the street line.
Okay.
Old South and Amelia, so that's just, it's essentially green space between the property line and the back of the wall.
Is there thoughts about enhancing that or doing something with it, since you're going to be doing the sidewalk?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's commonly a low green area right now. I mean, it's, you know, I don't think you, you can't do much with, because of the planting, because of the sightlines.
Okay.
But it is, it is a green space.
All right, I'm just trying to figure out how to maybe make it a little bit more contiguous in that sense, or, or do something with it. Anyways. The, the only other thing I might worry about, but I, I want to give it some thought, is that the outdoor patio. There's a part of me that likes that concept, and there's a part of me that worries about what it's going to attract into the latter hours, possibly by virtue of having residents directly there on the second floor that may bring it back into control, but I'd like to be able to take the opportunity to sit down with staff and just kind of do a little sounding board with that, just to have a better feel for it. I'm not totally dismissive of it, but it's just...
It's not our intention to have that as a evening hours spot.
Would it be just one of those things, you'd have stuff out there and you can roll it back in at the end of the night?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where people would potentially buy things and park a bike and sit and have a salad and a drink.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see, we'll see where that goes. I, that's why I want to, I hear my board members chiming in here at this point about other thoughts with it as well, too.
Yeah.
But I'd, I'd like to get that dialogue a little bit more out at this point. Trash storage and stuff on site, or just help me to figure that one out?
Trash.
Oh, there it is, okay. Thank you. And I, I do have to agree, I think a one-in-out circulation pattern makes more sense to me than, as opposed to the traffic coming in both ways. So I'm going to ask you to take a look at that as well, too. Thanks. Go ahead.
I can't hold you responsible for the problems on Amelia Drive. There are a couple of things you might want to look into. This property is going to be developed as a commercial property, period. What might be advantageous considering where this property is on the corner, is if somewhere along the line, a yellow line was painted down that curb cut from the entrance to where it hits Old South Road, because if people start parking along that strip, that's where it's going to get a little, visibility's going to get dicey. You can't see. So if, if the, they're not supposed to be parking on Amelia Drive anyway, but that's not your problem and not your responsibility to police everybody else. But if there was an orange line down that side right there because of its proximity to the curb in Old South Road, that would eliminate, hopefully, that group, discourage that group from parking there. So that may be the best way to attack that particular strip. As far as the outdoor patio, Husaros has got one, two doors away, right in front on the street on Old South Road. AK Diamonds has one on Old South Road. We have quite a few around. Island Kitchen is now putting a patio out in front. The Sea Girl used to have an open porch there. So I mean, as far as people eating in patio areas all over the island, this is quite common. I mean, even Foods had a little bit of it for a while until they replanted it, makes it look nicer. So I'm not concerned about the outdoor patio, just as long as it's screened or, or whatever we're going to do with it through the HTC process. So I think it's a good plan. I think one way in, one way out, the loading zone, this is all stuff we dealt with at the Cumby's as well. I think it's a good plan, and I think it's going to get developed. If we can just sort of control what's happening on your strip of Amelia Drive, that would certainly solve that part of it for me there. As I said, you can't fix what's going on up the street.
Right.
And that is something we have to address.
One possibility that we didn't discuss, and I want to go back and, and talk with the staff further and my clients, but there's an opportunity to potentially widen out, and this would require the town to cooperate, too, widen out that bus stop and have the bus stop become parking spaces when the NRTA shuts down.
Yeah, on-street.
And have some on-street parking there. I don't know if that's the vision that people have for Old South Road, if that's where you want Old South Road to go or not, but it is, it is a possibility.
I think staff's got some feedback they'd like to give you.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important, and then the board members should go and, you know, expect, drive into it yourselves, because it's not like, for example, where Stop &amp; Shop is, where the doors are opening into a high-speed lane. There is, that is an extra-wide bus stop there, where you can pull essentially completely off the road, and similar to what we do on Pleasant Street, when the bus isn't operating, that does become parking. I did have one question on the, the sidewalk that extends out at the bottom, and this would be the widening, I think, you know, it would be best to continue that straight.
Straight.
And ideally, that would continue further, a little further off the property, it would be best to continue up to Young's Way if possible. So if that would be possible to think about, because it would provide an interconnection to other...
Could, could that be in lieu of a bike path contribution potentially? For me?
I, I think it could.
Okay.
But it's up to the board to decide.
Well, we could talk, we can talk further about that, but...
Yeah.
I just don't know how far, how, do you have any sense how far it is from the edge of our property to Young's Way? Is it just one property?
No.
Several.
There's a, like, there's two, there's two, and then, then there's Bob Lekter's property, and then there's...
Yeah, there's a number of properties.
Then there's another one, then you go to Young's Way.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Max's, Max's is right on the corner.
Yeah, I think Mr. Forrest can continue.
I would also suggest that area that you had mentioned in between, that you at least think about some ongoing maintenance of that, you know, to be included in your property as part of the waiver.
Yeah.
I think it would be important to keep that area, you know, landscaped, whether it's low flowers or, you know, something on that corner. I think it's, if you look at what the bank has done across the street, I think it's important to keep that, and I think that the board could justify that grant of the waiver with some sort of ongoing maintenance requirement there. Those areas are particularly hard for the town to do a good job with, so.
Right.
Yep.
And I would suggest your back walkway connect out to the sidewalk directly behind the building on the other end.
Yeah, just keep it going, because then you can access the patio from it also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To provide a space that's not... To provide a space that's not, so people don't have to necessarily walk through the parking lot, but could walk through the sidewalk network to get to the-
And if able-bodied people can get to the patio, then you've got to have that path of travel extend to the patio for a wheelchair, whatever.
That's it for me.
Okay, great.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on it. Mr. Jensen, good evening.
Good evening. Paul Jensen, I'm here with Annie Camara, Annie's Whole Foods. I must say that Annie made a comment, she said the Amelia Drive is starting to really become a kind of a neighborhood, even though there is, as we know, it's a one-way street often with parking on it. And while this project shouldn't solve Amelia Drive, it is just one of the aspects that we should look at. And also, I know that the plus building, we have to exit and enter onto Old South Road, this is going to impact Old South Road. I think you have to, as a board, require a traffic study. By their own admission, this will be an in-and-out, five-minute thing. This could be a traffic of 100 cars in an hour on a busy hour, coming in, turning right or left off. I know there's two ways in on Amelia, but it's up and down. I think you should require site plan review, traffic study. In addition, while this lot is going to be developed, it doesn't have to be developed to this size. I notice on the plan, they're doing parking for 1,800 square feet. Yes, they have 5,000 square feet of footprint for the first floor. And I'm wondering, where's the floor plan that shows us how this is all going to be divided up? And I would think that you have to count more than just the shelving area as your store area, the deli area, those kind of places have to be counted in the parking calculation. As we know, there's no excess parking. If you can't park here, where are you going to park? And I would caution trying to create on-street parking a lot on Old South Road. It's a pretty fast-paced road. There's bad sightlines you could create by having cars, even when the bus is parked there, trying to see the sightline is hard to see cars coming. Again, traffic. We just respectfully ask the board to, you know, require some things, not grant waivers, there could be some more open space on this, the building could be shrunk by 500 square feet, they could provide more parking, the right kind of parking for the building, but without a floor plan, without seeing how this building is going to be divided up, we really can't make a parking calculation. I wanted to talk a little bit about alcohol. It's, I think it's a new thing for this board, there's a tradition with the selectmen do the alcohol, and they've really, there's alcohol sales up, all up and down here, and what's the need for more alcohol sales right here? So, I would ask the board not to grant the alcohol sales. Those are, I must say that I'm encouraged by the four apartments, that's a good idea, we need more housing, we're all for that. Those are mostly my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this?
Joanne Skoken, I live at 20 Tom's Way, but my driveway comes off of Old South Road and runs along the lot line there. When the buses park there, or the surveyors' trucks park there, I can't see. And I creep out into Old South Road to look down towards the rotary to see. You can't use parking there, I don't know, it, I can't see. The other thing, I don't know what the second commercial business is going to be in there. And the market kind of sounds like takeout food, more than a market to me, so I'm not really sure, you know, if there's a kitchen for them to do their takeout. And the other thing is just, I think people who live around here think the bike path might be on the wrong side of the street. If they have bike racks and they have a picnic area, somehow people are going to have to cross Old South Road. And the crosswalk now is at the other end of Amelia, because that's where the going into town bus pulls over. So, I'm not sure. It's a terrible road to cross, just because of the slopes coming down from going out of town. Just consider those things. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Anyone else? Mr. Ruley? Good evening.
Hi, Robert Ruley, I also live on Tom's Way. I think you got my email in your packets today opposing this, and I couldn't agree with Mr. Rektor more that Amelia Drive does have a problem and you need to address it. And I think you have some leverage here with which to address it. I'd like to encourage you to use this opportunity to put a blanket stay on any kind of approvals on Amelia Drive until the owners on that street form an association and start enforcing parking. I've been to three of these meetings at least, where the applicant has stood here and assured us that their customers will not park on Amelia Drive, it's simply not the case. Going down Amelia Drive, every one of those driveways has cars coming out of it, people are on bicycles, it's very dangerous. There are, when the restaurant was open at Cinco, when there was a spinning studio there, we had 40 or 50 cars there. Amelia Drive is 1,300 feet long, it's 1,125 if you take out the curb cuts, which is 58 parking places. Those are all used now. This market with 16 places, which frankly is not enough for the employees and the apartments, is going to have no place to park. I think Ms. Williams, your idea to have a yellow line heading north is great, but everyone on this island knows that you can park on Amelia Drive as long as you'd like and on the yellow lines. If you've been down there, you'll see that some of the people who own property on Amelia Drive have already painted them yellow. They've also put in cones, it looks like Boston during a snowstorm. There's a big problem with parking there, you know it and I know it. You've got some leverage here, I think you really need to take the bull by the horns, turn it into a one-way street and allow parking on one side. Until then, tell everyone there, no, we're not going to do this. This application is very troubling to me also, because I find the notion that their peak employees at 10, for 5,000 square feet of business, is optimistic at best. This place isn't going to be able to open the doors without having cars out on Amelia Drive. So, I'd urge you to deny this and anything else that comes before you until they make some steps to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who's wanting to comment, please?
Yes. Julie Rainamo, I own the property on the, by the trash bins. I am the abutter by the trash bins, yes, that's my property line right there. East, thank you. I haven't seen that plan, I only have this gray and white one that came. And I have several concerns, and I know the property is going to be developed and I don't begrudge anyone, I just think this is huge. My property line, the setback, the five-foot setback that they want to have reduced, I don't want that. When Amelia Drive, the planning board first approved it, they guaranteed five-foot shrubs, a five-foot greenery, I believe it was called, all along that border. But on this plan that I have, several of the parking spaces are in my five-foot setback, three of them, plus part of what they're going to call the loading zone. So, if the loading zone is along that side, then there's like five parking spaces where the cars can't back out of, the way I see it. Coming out of my driveway on 25 Old South Road is very time-consuming, to say the least, at this point. When the bus is in that stop, you cannot see what's coming. I think that they definitely need to have a traffic study if it's going to be this big, because it's, I just think that you should not waive that. I'm concerned about the ventilation, like Mr. Rektor said. I seem to be getting the dumpsters on my side and the loading zone on my side, so I really want to have at least that five-foot required setback and screening, and whatever else I can get. The three spaces for employees, I don't know a business that can open with three spaces. As far as garbage, does it have to be screened, and is that something that you guys can require? I don't know who I ask about that. Is that a yes, Barry?
I would, I think staff would concur, that does have to come before us at this point, so.
Is this, is this where we have to talk about that? I don't know.
This is where we have to talk about it. I think what I'd encourage you to do is initially work with the applicant, you can certainly talk to staff as well, too, to get some sense about things, but definitely work with the applicant.
Okay, and I'm concerned, like Joanne said, I think, we don't know what that second business is going to be. I know they already have a meat market, a fish market, a cafe, all kinds of stuff. I'm suspecting there's going to be the odors, and I don't want to be like the Brotherhood because I'm not quite that close, but I think I'm 10 feet away. I own the residential properties that abut this property, I think I own the only two residential areas that will abut this property. They are year-round, occupied by town employees, some of them. You know, I don't want fans right outside their bedroom windows, if we can help that. I don't really want the trash bins either, but, and that's all. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to comment on this? Not seeing anyone else at this point. Anything else from the board or staff? Nope.
Take a motion to continue to June 20, June 8?
June 8, yeah. That motion's made, and second for discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Thank you. Yep, good night. Ms. Bluffin is leaving for the night, so Mr. Borchardt, you're up for whatever comes up at this stage. Thank you, sir. Coffin subdivision, which is number 7825 of 579 Tomahawk Road. See Mr. Cohen rising on the occasion?
Mr. Chairman, let me just check, I think we need four votes, do we have five members, are we going to, five members sitting on this?
Mr. Eric Borchardt can, because we're opening this for our first time, right?
Right, correct.
Yeah, he's able to sit on this.
Perfect. I don't think it'll be controversial, but I'd certainly like a full board.
Sure.
I do want to clarify one thing off the bat, which is that, before I get into the details of this, that this project is, this, the site is actually fully built out, so what we're talking about is not hypothetical. And I wanted to explain why it's already built, since we're now applying for a permit for it. And the reason is, is that my client applied for a building permit before he owned all three of these 5,000-square-foot lots that are now in common ownership, and he was granted a building permit for doing the work that was done. And then after he went in to get a CIO, when he had acquired more lots, Marcus told him, first of all, you need an MCD, and second of all, you probably need to go in for a special permit for the zoning issue. So, my client applied for the work that was done, it was not, it was not done without the permit, and it was the zoning officer at the CIO stage who later noticed that he should have actually told him this in the beginning. So, I apologize that we're here not giving you the opportunity to have his input, as much input as you usually would like, but I wanted to make sure that you understood that my client did not try to avoid that.
Yep.
So, anyway, where we are here is, I'm sure you're very familiar with the Coffin subdivision, with the zoning issues there, that it's a CI zone that still has an RC-2 freeze, and that it is perhaps a, the most highly industrial area, or one of the most highly industrial areas in Nan-Tuck. I'm sure you're familiar with my client's business, Waterworks is an irrigation company, they do landscaping, and they have a few uses on this site. It would be for the storage and maintenance of their vehicles, it would be for light manufacturing of hoses and manifolds and stuff associated with irrigation business, and would involve a 2100-square-foot building that currently exists, that is cut up essentially into four non-even pieces, where there's an office, there are a couple of empty garage bays, and then there's a garage bay that's used for a storage of materials that need to be inside out of the weather. The building was constructed with three floors and the drain that are for oil separation and otherwise, and then the entire lot is paved and sloped to the center, which also has another drain. It's the only lot in the subdivision, we believe, that actually takes care of its own water drainage and infiltration. There's a wire fence that surrounds the property, and then that's been heavily planted with Boston Ivy, which should be basically 100% visibility deterrent screening as it takes in. Unfortunately, there's essentially no open space at the site because of the way it was constructed. We don't actually think that any open space is beneficial in this area, and that the screening that's in place is about as good as is needed. The zoning board, when it was in charge of granting these permits, was requiring private hedge at some point. I don't know that having these highly industrial uses have private hedge in between them makes any sense, and it's only required at a scattering of the sites. So, I would request that we be allowed to keep the Boston Ivy on the fence as a screening. The waivers that we're looking for are a waiver of the open space requirements, the setback requirement, the one building is as close as 5.8 feet to the setback, which is, in the CI zone would be a 10-foot setback, and in the RC-2 zone is a 5-foot setback. So, when my client constructed it at 5.8 feet, he thought that he was compliant with the zoning freeze, which he would be, but, you know, he should have been told to get a special permit in advance. So, we're looking for the waiver for the setback and a waiver of the inclusionary housing, there's no housing planned on the site, and there's no desire for it in the area. The 13923 site plan, traffic study, drainage, stormwater runoff, landscaping, and other reviews, we're seeking a waiver of, we're seeking allowance for the light manufacturing, interior and exterior storage and warehousing. I would know that those are all allowed under the CI zone, and they're allowed in the RC-2 zone, but they're allowed by RC, by special permit in the RC-2 zone, so that's where we're seeking them. And again, I mentioned that the screening, the bylaw doesn't actually provide for screening in the way that it's been done here, so we're seeking that waiver. So, that is it, I'm happy to answer questions, my client is here, if you do have any questions.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, I just think the waivers that are requested are completely consistent with what the planning board's intent was when this was approved as a commercial subdivision, so we recommend approval.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this? Hearing no comment?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's now being seconded for discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's now being seconded, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, staff.
No problem. Next thing before us is 7826, which is Zeke Dog LLC subdivision at 31 Quidnet Road, Mr. Brescher.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Attorney John Brescher, representing Zeke Dog LLC. What you have before you is a three-lot subdivision on Quidnet, on 31 Quidnet Road. Only two of the lots are buildable. As the subdivision stands, there, the lot, Lot A on the plan that's attached is the smaller of the two buildable lots at 20,000 square feet, and the rear lot has approximately 40,000 square feet. This is all an R20 zoning. The third lot, the roadway lot, is approximately 5,400 square feet. The applicant has requested a number of waivers, as it is a small rural subdivision that they're proposing with only two lots on it, one of which is that they are requesting that, there's an existing driveway on the property, however, there are no structures there. And they're requesting that the, basically that the existing driveway serviced both lots, even though, so part of the driveway would be on the roadway lot, part of it would be on Lot A, in which they would grant an easement to the back lot. Mr. King, the surveyor's here to answer any questions as well, but I'll wait for your comments.
Go ahead.
Try to find this with what was given to us as a plan. I don't have a GIS map at all. There's an awful lot of stuff going on out there, Zeke Dog's involved with some of it on the other side of the road, but trying to find this on this thing up in the corner, we require GIS maps, or at least a way to find this. I couldn't tell you where this was. I couldn't tell you where this was.
I can certainly provide that for you.
Would you?
Well, I have a problem with this whole subdivision. The amount of waivers that you're seeking is humongous comparatively. I don't mind not forcing you to pave 20 feet. But, I don't know. I just... It's huge. I know we've been getting requests for these up on Cliff Road, but they're a little bit more closer to town. This is out in a pretty rural area. So, I was having a little bit of trouble with this, with the amount of waivers that you're seeking, and the fact that I couldn't figure out which lots these were out there. So, that's just where I am at the moment.
Anyone else on the board wishing to comment?
Is there any wetlands?
Teddy King? Not on the lot, but the neighboring lot has a pond.
Anything else? Andrew, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, to you. John, it looks like Lot A at 20,000, that's not going to qualify for more than a couple bedrooms.
That is correct. It would be a one-bed... Or, I don't want to say it's a one-bedroom, but there will be one dwelling on it. Teddy might be able to give you the exact counts.
With a septic system, there'd be a three-bedroom system. That would catch one house.
You're going to use the hybrid systems.
So, that lot could or is effectively limited to one dwelling unit?
One dwelling, three bedrooms.
Okay. And is any improvements to the existing driveway, or does it have an apron at the end? Does it have an apron? It does have an existing apron. One other thing that we talked about earlier is, you know, if the abutting property owner, Landreth, which has oversized land, we would want to see some easement to use that road.
Yeah.
Because, again, we don't... To Linda's point is, we don't want to see many...
Many roads.
Many roads sort of cutting up every single property.
Understood. We were talking about earlier over in Surfside.
If there's a chance to consolidate, unless there's a problem over there. If there's not.
You all done, Andrew, or is there something else?
No, the only other thing... I know that we had some issue, if you remember. I'm trying to remember the details myself. On Low Beach Road, where there was... The road was proposed outside of the layout.
Oh, yeah.
Remember this?
I do.
Arthur probably remembers.
It was very deep in some spots.
I didn't see Arthur come in, so...
You remember that? And it was really deep, cut deep in some spots. Was that piece, or are we talking about a different one out there?
It's different. It was...
Closer to town, isn't it? You're talking to closer to town.
Go ahead, Mr. Reed. They've invoked you, so...
I've been invoked, but I'm actually here to express some concerns about this project, so I'm not... I'm a little bit out of sequence here. But if you're talking about the one out in Tom Nevers, that... I mean, in Low Beach.
Yeah.
That's the one that I'm thinking of as well. Exactly, Urban. And I expressed a lot of concern in that one about the fact that the right-of-way and the driveway, or whatever you want to call it, roadway entrance, did not coincide with each other. I'm not necessarily going to raise that as an issue in connection with this one for reasons that I'm going to bring up when I come up. But I do... You know, it's certainly a parallel situation, and I think it's kind of a cutting-edge concept that you would have a roadway and, you know, an access that are not congruent with each other. I'll leave it at that for right now.
Thank you. I appreciate your little bit of insight. So, Andrew, go ahead. I want...
Well, as a result of that, I'm... You know, it may be something where there might need to be a trigger at some point to put that roadway into the layout, either at the time of a building permit on the lot, or second dwell... Or something. It's something I think we might need to have a discussion about.
Yeah, go ahead.
Though I couldn't find which lot this was. I'm looking at this little scratch up in the left-hand corner. That's... You need a microscope to get to. Magnifying glass. It looks like there are three similarly proportioned narrow, long lots, right together out of the same... Possibly, probably out of the same subdivision. That concerns me. We're having a heck of a lot of trouble, particularly at the HDC, with the same kind of ridiculousness across the street, up on the hill, Arthur knows, that come off of Chase Lane. Very narrow, very long, presenting atypical house sightings and everything else. This looks like there's a possibility of doing the same thing to the two lots to the east if it's the three lots that I'm looking at on this little scratch. That concerns me greatly. If we're going to be asked for the extreme waivers on three 60,000 square foot lots to be subdivided in the same way, each one with their own little cute road. If that is the case, I need to look at this as an overall, because I'm not about to approve this cute road if I'm going to be faced with two more cute roads to the east. If this... These are the lots that I'm looking at, and it looks like that's where the little arrow goes. Is that the case? That I've got three of these lots exactly the same, and they all could come in with their own little roads to the east out of the same subdivision?
Yeah, no, I see on these... I'm without looking into it further, I'm not sure.
Well, I can't go anywhere near this unless I know that. Because if all three of these parcels are coming in at the same way, like they did across the street, this is a not... This is a no-go for me, right off the bat. Because if that's the case, I'd want a shared situation and have to reverse these lots, so they're together, and we have one road, and maybe the one on the far east has its own on the eastern side of it. The doors lock it after 8 o'clock. Yes, wonderful building. So, that's my concern.
Okay.
And I know there's people here to speak to this, but that's... I need more information before I go anywhere else.
Okay. I think that's... Carl, did you have anything on this before we...
No, he got stuck out of the room.
He got stuck.
Yeah, I know. That's... They have a bad habit of doing that.
I'm okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So, Mr. Reed, I believe we're going to open the public hearing, and I'll let you go right ahead there.
Yes, thank you very much. The two lots to the east of this that Linda was referring to, and this all... I know the background of this. They all came out of common ownership. This is... They all were in the Eager family. And I believe the Eagers sold this lot to the present owners and still own the land to the east, and also a little piece immediately to the south, and then the other lot to the east of that. I don't know what family members are involved. But I do know that it's not in common ownership at the present time with the subject property, so I'm not sure how much of an issue that is. What you have going on here is that this is in R20 zoning. It's right on the edge of R20 zoning. I represent Robert Landreth, who owns the property immediately to the west, which is vacant land that he's owned for 20 or 30 years without determining what ultimate action he's going to take with it. But his property is zoned as Lug III. And as such, it's not about to be intensively developed, nor frankly would he have any use for an easement in Quidnet... What are they calling it? Quidnet Reserve. Interesting that developers always like to call something a reserve, isn't it? But, in any event, the... And any house that would be built on his property would undoubtedly simply have its own driveway coming in from Quidnet Road. And I'm not at all sure that we really care that much about the fact that the driveway, which would be used for access on the roadway, aren't, as I said earlier, congruent with each other. Because that actually provides a little bit more of a buffer against whatever development is going to be on this property, particularly Lot A of this property, than would be the case if the house to be built on Lot A would be closer to the Landreth property. I do note, and I also represent in addition to Mr. Landreth, Greg Seibert, who owns land to the south. It's separated by this piece, by the small portion of the Eager property that was separated from this lot that lies immediately to the south. But that's a small piece. And the Seibert property, which is a piece that fronts on the pond immediately to the south of that and has a house on it. We represent them as well, and they express concern about what's going on. Again, in terms of what they see as being the intensity of development, and I realize it's a different zone compared to their Lug III large lot zoning status. What I would like to ask... I can raise issues. There aren't really planning board issues, and I'm not going to get into that. I've had some discussion with John about what we might be looking for that would alleviate some of our concerns. But the real point that I would like to raise would be that I think it would be entirely appropriate with this situation with the waivers and with the road issue that there be a prohibition on second dwellings on both lots. Again, I think it's unlikely in the extreme that anyone would want to have a second dwelling on Lot A, the northerly lot closer to the road, the smaller lot. But I think that to have a separate dwelling that might be separately occupied at times in this scenario with all of these waivers, with the very, very limited extent of roadway improvements that are suggested, would be an appropriate condition for this board to impose on any approval of this. And I... We have... We know this is going to be developed. There's no question. We don't oppose the plan, per se, but we do have that concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this? And I do have a question, as well. Go ahead.
Ted, is part of the actual paved Quidnet Road on this property? So, it's outside of its own layout? And is that something that your client would be willing to grant an easement to the town about?
I think so. I'll confirm.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
I'm part of the Eager family. Are you planning on using your existing road? That road for the development? Because it states here it's going to be on the western side, and that road is pretty much in the middle of the property.
Yes. It is my understanding that they'll be using the existing driveway.
Existing road. Okay. And there's one septic on the property with a well that my father had put in a long time ago. Will the other property be requiring another well and another septic?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Borchardt, I just have a question for you. That larger 40,000 square foot lot, you're in 20,000 square foot zoning. Does that have subdivision potential beyond? Do you see that?
No, I do not.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to be really clear to understand.
No, I think the only question is if there would be a second dwelling on there as Arthur asked. And my client's position was, well, depending on the bedroom, you know, how many bedrooms are available, with the size of the septic, you know, that's going to really limit the development, whether someone wants to put, say, a five-bedroom house or a three-bedroom house, a two-bedroom cottage.
Correct. All right. I just wanted to get that up on the table and make sure the question was asked and answered.
To the chair. Tina, are you guys still own the two lots that I was talking about earlier to the east? You're keeping those lots, or this is going to get sold like this one did?
No, we're keeping them.
Okay. And you're not subdividing or doing anything with those lots at the moment? You just have them separate ownership so they hang out there in case there's a zoning change?
It was our family property, and my sister sold it.
Okay. I'm just checking, because I couldn't figure out how this one got away.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a position on this subdivision? Or is it done? It's a... Do you have a position as to how your family feels about this subdivision?
No, we know it's going to be developed. We're just concerned about how it's going to be developed.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Wouldn't it be relatively easy to widen Quidnet Reserve Drive and get most of the driveway within it? You have plenty of extra area. And Lot A might be a little thinner, but not so much.
We can certainly explore that possibility. I know it was addressed, and it's something in the back... Sort of in the back of our minds, so...
And then the other question I have is that I'd actually like to see some kind of plan and profile for the road. It could be rudimentary. It doesn't have to be full-blown, as far as I'm concerned. But I'd at least like to see what's going on there.
Yeah. Yeah, those opportunities don't come along real often when we can try to recorrect that situation, so that's a good point.
No, no. I meant the Quidnet... I meant the...
Is that what you think?
No, I meant the proposed road.
Oh, the proposed road, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's what I was talking about, because, you know, you don't know what the grading's like. It could, you know... Yeah, it could be a mess. And that's it. Thank you.
Leslie, we've seen quite a few of these, you know, a couple on Hooper Farm Road, some up on Cliff Road. All kinds of people come in. But I don't remember one with this many waivers and this narrow. Is it just me, or have we done one with as many waivers requests as this one is?
We have done several with this many waiver requests. I mean, Section 2.06, those are mostly submission requirements, which pertain to the plan. So, when you see everything in Section 2, and then everything in Section 4, they're almost repeats of each other, so it looks a little more drastic. But I had talked with Attorney Borchardt, I guess maybe on Friday, about trying to widen out this roadway way out a little bit, because I think it is narrow, and the projects that have been approved in the past have been closer to town. Were the boards considered these?
This is rural. This is rural. This is very rural.
But it is one additional lot, and I think the board should consider some dwelling unit restrictions.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just one question that I meant to mention. I pulled up on the GIS maps, the 2014 GS map, you know, with the lot line overlays on it, and couldn't find the driveway in question that we're talking about. And I've heard since then from talking to some people, and maybe Tina knows something about this, that that driveway had, in the place that's shown on the plan, had actually just been put in in the last year or so. It's not a historic driveway or anything.
Then it can move.
Well...
I think that's right, I'm not sure when exactly it was installed by, I believe it was relatively recent.
I think there's been some reasonable things raised. I don't see this necessarily closing tonight. I think we've got another, we've got another month ahead of us right now, easily. And so I think some of these questions can be answered to get some satisfactory answers and develop a little bit of a game plan.
I'd like a GIS map.
Can I ask just one thing, Barry?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, just to give them, go ahead.
Since the layout of this, of Quinnett Road, now that we're starting to see that, you know, I mean, we've discussed the width of it, Quinnett Road, is on our bike path potential list, doesn't look like it's even possible. You know, I mean, should we be trying to capture some of this right of way, if we can, like you suggested, or should we, is part of there, you know, because we're going to continue this, you know what I mean, we might as well bring it up?
I believe the Quinnett, the plan for Quinnett is actually on the north side of the road.
On the other side?
So, but I think the roadway, where, you know, wherever there's an encroachment outside the layout, we should act on it.
Anything else? Anything else?
Motion to continue to June 8.
Yep. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously. O-298, which is Nantucket Airport, Bunker Parcell, Jesse Dutra, on 33 Bunker Road, minor modification request.
Motion.
Yep.
Wait, what about the staff will provide a recommendation if you may?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, the board had questions about the site plan, and you asked to have the applicant submit something more detailed, which they have, they have.
Yep.
And the new site plan shows parking spaces in more detail about the exterior storage and the use of the property. And this is completely consistent with the Bunker Road MCD. We recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Were you good there? Was there discussion?
Yeah, no, I'm fine, I'm fine.
So, motion's made in second and discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously. 7084, which is Earhead Drive subdivision, this is a Form J for lot releases, staff recommends endorsement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second and discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously. 7661, Woodland Hill subdivision, let in Mill Hill Road, Form J again.
Now, I do have a problem with this. Woodland Hill, that's Mill Hill, right?
Yes.
Yep.
They're not moving along on the infrastructure up there.
There's a bunch of them up there.
It's been sitting there.
They have just recently started making some progress.
Because they had stopped for a long time, not, and at one point, it wasn't going to keep going.
Yeah, they stopped over the winter, and they've started again. Ed Pesci has been out doing inspections, talking with their team, and releasing a lot at this phase of construction is consistent with planning board practice. So I would recommend endorsement.
There are things going on up there. So they are going to continue to do it?
They are moving right along. I talked to Mr. Grant just this morning.
I have great doubts. But I'll make a motion to release Lot 12.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, okay. I thought maybe we'd go with the very...
No, we're going to keep going.
Okay.
Three of us can vote on it?
Yep.
Yes.
Then we have preliminary plans. Donnie Dimick, representing the applicant, Don Bracken. We do have a plan on your desk that came in separately. Are you giving me another plan?
This is a safe plan.
Okay.
I like visual aids.
Thank you.
At this hour.
At the last meeting, Linda and I were not here. And questions had come up about the uses in the subdivision, it's an R-C2 district. Mr. Dimick and I met with Leslie and Andrew a few days ago. He's very flexible on what the, what conditions he's willing to place on some of the lots. The reason I've highlighted these plans is to show what we discussed, and to get some feedback from the board. The lots in green, which are on the west side of the property, which are but existing residential properties, he would ask, agree to a condition that those be used only for residential uses. The lots in orange would be commercial uses or residential uses. I think we could also, when we get to the definitive plan stage, come back with a more defined list of uses for those lots. He anticipates those to be similar to the other uses on Bartlett Road, with maybe garages on the first level, and offices, and an apartment on the second level, perhaps. The other thing that we discussed that we'll be looking into in the definitive plan stage is increasing the roadway width. And based on these uses that we're showing now, we would increase the roadway width of roadway A coming in, possibly roadway B as well, but, or perhaps I could stay at 20 feet, we'll look at that a little closer. We're also going to look at providing some on-street parking spaces, sort of similar to what we had done on Mill Hill, which you were just discussing, using some curbing to define some spaces. I'm also showing what could be, or maybe a proposed sidewalk for the subdivision, in that pink line, which comes off of Bartlett Road, on the south side of the road, and then would cross Road B, and then run along the frontage of that block of four residential lots that we would be proposing. We're also going to look at, on some of these lots, requiring some common driveways to try to limit, there's only 40 to 50 feet of frontage on these lots, to try to limit the amount of curb cuts, especially in the areas where we're proposing sidewalks. And just as a quick recap, the total lot area is about two acres, there's 11 lots total. And I think, and it's going to be serviced by Town Water. Fortunately, there's no sewer available in this area, probably won't be for some time. There will be septic systems on these lots, so that in itself will sort of limit the residential areas, I think, as far as being able to have secondary dwellings. But at some point, if sewer, if sewer is available, which is part of the plan down Bartlett Road, they could add the sewer system at that time for those lots. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, or take any comments that we could use when we prepare the definitive plan.
Go ahead.
Don, I got a lot of questions, but I got a lot of concerns. I don't know why we have big sidewalks on both sides of it, that's beyond me, out there.
It's only on one side of that we're proposing.
Oh, is that on-street parking on the other side?
Right, correct.
Now, this side of the road, regardless of what's going on on the other side of the road, this side of the road, he had a different subdivision a long time ago. And this side of the road generally does not have commercial uses.
There is one commercial use abutting us, which is Codelak's building.
Right.
To the north. The rest is residential.
And that concerns me, because it's traditionally not been heavily commercial use, because it does back up to a lot of residential back in here. I understand you have residential laid out here. But these are very small lots. How many, how many bedrooms can you get with no sewer on a 5,000 square foot lot?
On the other lots, we were able to get, depending on how much footprint we use, we were able to get five or six-bedroom systems on the other lots, so...
On a 5,000 square foot lot?
Yes, yeah. Well, the way they were laid out is the houses were put further back, and the septic systems were put under the parking in the front. So, we had to be creative, but we, I don't see any issue getting a four-bedroom system on these lots.
And I'm concerned, because you do back up to Pine Valley.
Right.
And I'm concerned about the three commercial lots on the north, unless you set aside a buffer on the back of them. And what is, what is Keel Lane and those guys now, are they R10s?
They're R10.
Yeah, I'm concerned about this, frankly. I don't care how many, you know, get whatever lots you can get in here, but I'm concerned about it. I don't mind you having a road going into it, and having lots inside the subdivision, it's a big piece. But I don't know. I'm concerned about, I guess I'm concerned about that much commercial on that side of the road, and having it so close to a well-developed residential neighborhood.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make it clear that the board needs to understand that this is R-C2 right now.
Yeah, still.
It's all commercial, and I think that our meeting was very productive, and Mr. Dimick was very open, and really helped to sort of come up with this. He was as concerned as we were to keep residential uses, or residential lots, abutting the other residential lots. If, you know, I think the board should moderate some of its thoughts here, because commercial uses, if this subdivision doesn't go through with these kind of restrictions, and with an owner that's open to these kind of restrictions, commercially, commercial land abuts that area. So, and then you'll be reviewing an MCD or something else.
Correct.
There's also other land not shown on here, that was part of our discussion, and is part of our R-C2 removal and elimination on this. And again, he...
Let him finish, please.
The properties to the north are a group of A&Rs that, again, would go into the R-5 district, the lots in green would go into R-5 district, and he's agreed to that. As Mr. Bracken has said, we talked about how these orange uses that would be commercial would not be open to all R-C2. So we're not talking about retail and restaurants here, we're talking about, again, I think a thoughtful consideration of the mixed-use commercial residential that you see in other places along Bartlett Road. So I would be careful about going too far afield here, because there's other land that we should consider. There's a big picture here, it's significantly changing this, one of these last groups of R-C2.
It might be a good idea if we saw the big picture, but I don't have that part of the plan. But I'm concerned about just providing at the backs of these things that run up against commercial and residential, because Tommy isn't going to own this forever. Or the surrounding residential that's already there, he's got quite a few houses on various lots out there. I'd like to just know that they're not going to want their commercial parking lots right up behind all of these surrounding residential structures. But also, what's going to happen to these lots when we get rid of R-C2, because that's where we're headed, we just haven't gotten that target. Where, what would these become?
The green lots would become R-5.
R-5.
The orange lots would probably become C-Tech, which is similar to Marble Way, which is across the street.
Yep.
And there is a mixed, you know, this further along Bartlett is a similar mixed-use group also in C-Tech. So, C-Tech is also what probably, what's his name here? Codelak, we've had a discussion with him about his property going into the C-Tech.
And what, because he's just a way on Bartlett Road, and he's staying residential for the moment?
I would, I think lots G, F, and E, and Codelak's property would stay in commercial. And the two house lots, I think we talked about going to R-5.
Right.
The bigger, number 58 and 56. And then the green, and then the houses which are kind of coming off the, and we can give you a more detailed map, but the other properties would go to R-5 as well.
So bigger picture might be helpful. Are we going to run into a problem with spot zoning, because these are like certain things, either the inside, something?
I believe that's, that this is all consistent with the master plan, and then there's some other, again, I guess the bigger picture will help understand the zoning picture.
I'm fine.
Yeah, I think the opportunity to start addressing some of the commercials is going to be when you get to the definitive plan stage. I know when we first saw this, it really wasn't clear, so I appreciate you bringing some more clarity to it, I'm glad to hear that the applicant is willing to work with staff. And there is a certain amount of consistency about having commercial in this area at this point, so I don't think we just want to say, no, 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 no. I think we want to try to be consistent with how the neighborhood has developed itself at this point. No, this is, I think it was a step into a good direction, and I thank you for working with staff to kind of bring this a little bit further ahead, to where we can maybe start looking at definitive plan and get a much better idea about things. So, thanks.
I do have one.
Go ahead.
Maybe if we could get building envelopes, something like that, on one in 11.
Yeah, we usually have...
Yeah, I know you usually do, but I meant those in particulars, they abut that other property.
But we can also look at buffers, too.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying.
I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Dimick would be open to some buffers along the residential properties.
Well, that's all I'm looking for, is on the backside of the block, a buffer zone. The one that ran right up to their case backyard.
Go ahead. Andrew, sewer. How far away is sewer from here? I can't believe there's not sewer down there.
Well, it's unbelievable. Sewer is all to the east, right?
Yeah, to the northeast, going up Bartlett. I think it's probably 1,500 feet, 2,000 feet, maybe. It is a good distance, and it's a shallow line when you get there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and so this would, even the main in Bartlett Road would probably be like one of those low-pressure lines, and this could tie into that low-pressure lines. And those lines, they can directional drill after the roads are in, so much easier to put in. That's...
So is there going to be dry sewer put in here?
No, no.
No, okay.
Not, yeah, we're not proposing that anyway.
And just for clarification, dry sewer is illegal, we can't, we can't do that. We did, I think we would ask for easements over the roadway lots.
Yep.
In the event that sewage, the sewer is extended, this would be in Needs Area as part of the Somerset area. So if the sewer line is continued on Bartlett, and we may want to consider a condition that does require a hookup within a certain time period.
It's not as easy as the Aurora one.
No, because that has the pump station in it.
Right.
This is crazy. I hate that.
All right, so, does that maybe give you a better sense of direction of things?
Yeah, no, that's, that's great, you know, it gives us the direction we need to go forward to definitive, so...
All right, and like I said, I for one, need to say thank you for really trying to work with staff to pull some things together here in this area, especially with it being R-C2 and stuff. Board members, what do y'all, what do y'all want to do at this point? I mean, normally we...
We all have a...
Well, normally we send a letter.
A positive...
Yep.
For a better plan.
Yes. Yep. So, are you thinking that...
Don't we close the hearing and approve it, like you'd...
Well, there's no hearing on this.
No hearing, you would authorize the chair to endorse a letter of approval, probably based on the discussion items that we have.
Yep. And do I hear a second? Motion's made in second and for discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes happy unanimously.
Thank you.
So, the lot thing before us, which I'm not sure anyone's here, is the EC...
Jeff's here. They're up in the hallway.
Oh, they're, oh, okay, I didn't know they were up in the hallway. Yeah, easy IAF, what a club. Thanks, Don. Yeah, no, thanks, thanks for fetching them. So, the lot thing before us, which I'm not sure anyone's here, is the EC...
Jeff's here. They're up in the hallway.
Oh, they're, oh, okay, I didn't know they were up in the hallway. Yeah, easy IAF, what a club. Thanks, Don. Yeah, no, thanks, thanks for fetching them. What's that?
Want to come down here, Carl?
No, I, none of us really do at this point. Some of this will come together as I think they begin to talk to us, so... Mr. Cohen, you up? For...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is a preliminary review for a new club, and I'm going to let Sue Ellen take the lead at this. We have the owner of the property and the club developer, and we have different people to answer different kinds of questions.
Sure, do you want to introduce them to me, just so that...
Hi, Sue Ellen Delcourt.
We have Isaiah and Jeff Kuschel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you. We're here just with the sketch plan to primarily get the board's feedback on what we'd like to propose out at 88 Old South Road. The lot is approximately three acres. You can see it on the locust map on the lower board. And above is what we're proposing is an Isaiah Athletic Club nantucket. And we're here to get your feedback on, to come back with you with some direction as to how to go about getting this permitted through the board.
Okay.
We're here, we know we're going to get multiple permits. We'll require and should be showing up at HDC shortly, and we need to be permitted with you. The structure will be approximately a 7,200 square foot structure, which will house four squash courts, a training facility, spa, and a sports barn, bar, sorry. Sports bar. No, it's kind of a contradiction. On the site plan, and I guess it's hard to not look and refer to it standing back here. I'll look at my little one. It's approximately about 120 feet in off of Old South Road is the drive. The main building will be there. We anticipate having two pools and athletic field behind the facility and about 50 parking spaces with the opportunity to have some overflow parking added in the back. It also does now have an access road in the back from Egan Lane. We, we think we'll, we think we'll have about 200 memberships at capacity. And how many employees? About 30 employees in full peak season. We, we'd like to hear your direction on hours of operation. We're, we're thinking probably from 6:00 a.m. to 8, 9, 10:00 p.m. We'll offer public bus passes to employees and bike racks for alternative, alternative methods of transportation. We're hoping to offer perhaps an off-season membership, like a winter membership program for year-round residents. That's about all I have to add. And I guess we're primarily looking for your feedback, and we're all here to answer any of your questions.
Board members.
What, there's another, it comes off Old South Road, but it connects to another...
That's Egan Lane. So, as you're coming down Old South Road, right before you get to 88, you'd hit Egan, and there's a back entrance.
Okay. And what goes on with the abutting properties? What kind of use are they?
It's a, it's a commercial use.
Yeah, commercial, yeah.
A lot of landscape companies in there.
Right, right.
Heavy, like day, day use.
Yeah, Ms. Markland, I just want to clarify. The intent would not be to have Egan Lane be a main entrance and exit. That would be for potentially service vehicles, deliveries, emergency access. The main member access would be up Old South Road.
6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Primarily inside use. Inside use, and the facility is centrally located on the lot. I mean, I primarily see the later use, it's inside, it's a workout club. You know, it's, there's no tennis outside. The pools will probably be closed in the evenings. Yeah, I would think most, you know, heavy usage is midday mornings and before the dinner hour would be my guess.
Go ahead.
Do you anticipate special events where you would exceed the average of 100 people on the site?
We do anticipate special events. I hadn't thought about a cap or an amount, but yes, I'll answer that yes at this point.
What about commercial kitchen?
We're, we're thinking we're going to do prepared prep food only. We're catering, yeah, strictly grab-and-go food. You know, hopefully partnering maybe up with something like the green and have like a grab-and-go program, no, no commercial kitchen.
No restaurant.
No restaurant either, yeah.
Make sure if you have events going on here, that you have more than enough parking, because I don't think you have enough parking if you're going to have an event. And the last thing you're going to want is people creeping out on the Egan Lane or creeping out, you know, your front entranceway.
I think the thought, and I don't, I think we have to revise the site plan slightly, is our thought is we're going to move the lower pool up closer to the facility, slide the athletic field over to where that pool is, and that whole grass area would become overflow parking if necessary.
Which would be about 75 spots.
And technically, you could park on the athletic field turf.
Yeah.
I don't like the idea of it, but yeah.
I don't want that idea.
I don't either.
It's also really expensive.
Right.
To mess that up.
That would be at the discretion of the applicant to determine how they want to do that.
And, and, yeah, worst case, we probably also have some parking up in, by the gatehouse at the front of the property.
What kind of athletics are going to be going on in the athletic field?
I'm going to let Isaiah answer that. Isaiah?
Okay.
Just mostly some outdoor training with clients during the day, get outside and be in the sun. There's nothing really planned specifically, but we'd like to have the opportunity for pickup soccer, throw around lacrosse in the shoulder months. You know, we'd like to potentially open it up, some of the youth activities. So, there's no scheduled planned, like sports leagues, but mostly, I would say, pretty low-key, you know, pickup games, stuff like that.
So, a few things. If you're going to, I've heard so many places say, we're going to work with the school, we're going to work with the school. By the time you get to definitive phase, I'm going to want to see a letter to that effect that they're, they're just as interested, because that's important. I think my colleagues have touched upon the fact that parking needs to be looked at. I might want to throw something back at staff to say, is there anything we need to do in Egan Lane? Just for traffic shunting and those kind of things, and any improvements that need to take place.
I would just say, I think you need to, I know you've said you don't want to use that, but you might, you might want to consider that. I don't know what the sightlines are coming out, but, and how it all intersects with the bike path there. But I think you ought to, don't close anything off yet until you've taken a good look at that. I mean, it might make sense to have a one-way type, I don't know.
Yeah, I...
Egan Lane is dirt.
I don't want to design this on the fly, but I don't, I think we should be able to look at maybe, just take a look at that.
Yeah, at some stage.
You mean one way in and come out the other way?
Yeah.
Keep in mind, Egan Lane is also a series of easements.
Yeah, that's not an even lane.
Unless you're making progress on...
Getting there, yes.
Those are people's yards.
Which, at this point, I do not believe it is.
Yeah, I, I just want to be a little cautious here, too, about, you know, especially if you're running events and stuff, the level of traffic shunting you're going to do on Old South Road. Because if it's going to be that intensive at times, then maybe there's improvements on Old South Road you're going to have to entertain as well, too. I would certainly look with other, with an eye toward other things about what do we do on Old South Road to entertain that level of traffic. I think you're going to need to define how many special events you want to do over the course of a year, so that we have some sense about that. I'm not going to throw Egan Lane off the table yet. I think that's a discussion worthy of staff. Because, like I said, no matter what, we're always going to be turning that eye back toward Old South Road and what's going to happen. I'm glad to hear you've talked about your hours of operation. I think once the sun starts setting at this point, yeah, you do want to definitely start pulling things inside. If the intention is keep squash courts or the tennis courts open...
No tennis.
I'm sorry.
Squash inside.
But if you want to do external lighting, when, when the sun starts going down, again, that's just good, good. I just want to raise that point.
Lighting is going to be tough today.
Yep, I know, lighting will be tough, but let's, let's just at least put it on the table and see what the response we get back is. That's all I'm encouraging at the moment. Yeah, maybe, maybe, I think maybe redesign the site a little bit so you can pull some more parking in would be a good idea. I really do. And, you know, I hear what some of my colleagues are saying, but how you want to designate that to be able to meet overflow demand when it happens, that really is something we're going to thrust back on you at this point. If it's not using one of your fields or something, maybe some other type of alternate transportation plan, but provides busing or something from some alternate site would not be such a bad idea.
I don't think, I don't think the letter from the school is what we're after here. It's not going to be with the school. What it's going to be with is youth soccer, youth lacrosse, the independents. And there are a couple of different entities out there that are just on their own, has nothing to do with the school at all. When they run soccer clinics, they don't have any space a lot of times to do it. And, you know, that, that's island-wide, that's summer kids, it's all kinds of people, they run lacrosse camps. That, so I think that's pretty much, if you're going to open it to other entities, it's going to be the independent guys that, that run out of places to go, because they can't use the high school and the fields in the summer.
So, you're talking more youth programs?
Yeah, I think that's where you're going and not the men's soccer league, which would tear it up. So, I think that, that's the kind of thing you're looking at, because the high school teams, there's liability issues, there's all kinds of stuff. The high school teams would not be using these fields. It would be those independents and camps and all that stuff, because we don't have as many camps as we used to, and we don't have nowhere to put them half the time. So, there's a massive push to get field space in the summer for all kinds of really great soccer camps, cross camps, all that stuff. So, that's, that's really where the, the, in the, in the shoulder seasons, they run camps as well, so...
All I'm, all I'm saying is I really don't care who it's from at this point, but some letters of commitment to say that there's an earnestness to it, because I've had other facilities pitch to us before where it's like, this will be the next best thing to the community and, you know, the people in soccer and lacrosse, and there's no interest. And that's being used as a benefit to try to offset some site things that need to happen. So, I've learned, as one member, I've learned my lesson a little bit at this point. And that's all I'm asking you respectfully is to go out there and give us something that's a little bit more solid and just say, we're going to make it beautiful.
It's a letter of interest.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Do we ever ask for a turning lane, like a right-hand turning lane? In the entrance?
That has come up with a letter on Delcourt in the past.
I'm just, I, I haven't seen it, but I, to me, it's sort of like, that'd be a good idea.
Well, I think with other development on Old South Road, it's something we may need to be looking at. I don't know.
I'm just going to move this.
Okay.
Right, if there is a traffic study, I mean, are you ask, I don't know if the applicants are contemplating a waiver or that you are going to do a traffic study.
I think one of the things we want to do is get, take the temperature on the board or be interested in a traffic study, and the assumption going in was that it would be something you'd be fairly interested in. Is that accurate?
Well, let, let me ask you a question. Do you, do you, I, I don't think we necessarily need to act on this tonight, and I'm going to throw this out to Andrew and Leslie. Do you think spending some time over the next month may help refine a few of these things, just like we did with the Dimick? Because I, I see some of the traffic issues that we're just starting to surface right now as really kind of important things as to how this whole thing's going to flow.
Well, I, unlike, I mean, the Dimick thing is a preliminary plan, so that it's a specific... This is just a sketch plan at this point.
Okay, sorry.
I would assume that a traffic, maybe a mini-traffic study, I mean, I don't think it has to be major, but I think that looking at the turning movements and maybe coming up with a professional opinion about what those might be would sort of lead to whether a traffic study was warranted or not, or maybe there's some other improvements that might need to be done. Which is why, you know, I think the, and I understand what you're saying about the series of easements. If the, is the, is the issue there overburdening the easement? Is that, is that the concern? Okay, so...
Yep.
And I didn't want to imply that Egan Lane is off the table, but I think that it's important to recognize that it's a different status than, than a ordinary public or private way road.
Right. So, I'm sorry, Andrew, are you done? Or was there anything else?
No, I think, I think that probably some sort of, again, mini-traffic study and identifying, you know, I mean, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, maybe there's actions that need to be taken, you know, in stages to maybe make that work. But again, I'd like to hear a little bit more about, you know, what the inflow-outflow, the times. I think that would be helpful for the board in considering this.
Membership numbers, winter back, membership, because that'd sort of give us a time, how many people have to spread out over those hours that you're open.
You're looking at, you know, maybe 200-plus members, but the, in the industry, you get about a 20% maximum show up at any time. So, you know, it's not, you don't have that many people all there all at once.
Yeah.
And then if you're doing winter memberships like the Westmore and the Great Harbor do, then you got to account for how many those you're going to have, so we know exactly how many people are circulating in the summer versus the winter.
I do have one question. If we intend to seek an inclusionary housing waiver, does the board have any concerns over granting that waiver?
No, no.
That's all, almost like the bus pass.
But I will, go ahead.
No, I just want to ask, kind of like what Andrew's talking about. We just had a public hearing on this market. You know, everything about Old South Road in the last two months, it's been about how fast we go or how slow we go. I'm kind of like, it's crazy. We want to go really fast, and we want to go really slow. Where do we want to go? I see Old South Road as slow, but 30, 25. I don't see it as a problem, because we've decided as a town that that's the only road to the airport. You know what I mean? And, but from Andrew's point, I think when you start talking about turning lanes and things like that, I think it needs to be systematic on that road, Andrew. Like, you know what I mean? We've got development that's going to happen, we know that. I think we need to make the right decisions. I don't think this warrants a big study.
Yeah.
But I think some kind of study as far as like where we're going on Old South Road and what we're going to do to improve it.
Larger picture.
Bigger picture of Old South Road is more important. Should we have one, should we have right turn only, for example, coming out of Amelia? Right? I mean, those kind of things, I don't know.
And what happens if you go 200 feet to the west?
No, the road through the woods to Sconset. I mean, there's a lot of different pieces to Old South Road that's going to happen in the next 20 years.
Yeah, just, just as a comp, if you think about the traffic coming out of Noshop, that's significantly more traffic than you're probably talking about here. Obviously, not a traffic engineer, but there's a pretty good comp nearby that shows you that even the massive amount of houses in Noshop doesn't have a real hardship on that road. It flows pretty well.
Is there a shuttle stop across the street from this? You might want to sort of look at where the closest one is.
Isn't that one at...
This one, fine.
At the airport corner.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's not that far.
This one at like 108, yeah, it's really close.
Oh, 108 is a little pay thing. Okay. I mean, I, hey, listen, people don't do this, because there's no... Okay, I mean, I, hey, listen, people don't do this, 'cause there's no market. I mean, there's gotta be a market for this stuff. I remember ten years, with the Westmore Club, everybody said, "We don't need it." And we didn't need the one market, so, there's gotta be a market for this kinda stuff, so, it's RC2, Andrew.
Well, and Ms. Chairman, so while you're here, you know, Jeff, we've talked about this before, about that's, this is an area that we're looking to rezone, so, I do think some thought should be given to what that will be. We're open to ideas on that, except for we're not changing it, so.
Yeah.
But I'm speaking to the abutters, Andrew.
No, I know, I mean, I think this use is, this use is a great use, a great use considering the residential-
It's a moderate use for commercial, really.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I hear you, 'cause I mean, there's really not much difference in this particular application if it's RC2 versus CN, is it in your, in your eyes?
No, but, but again, we want a commitment one way or the other. If this is gonna stay commercial use, it needs to go to CN, and if it needs to, if residential is a future, it needs a residential district. But it's not gonna stay RC2, and I mean, what we usually do is reach out to the owners and say, "What, what can you live with?" And, again, my example if, before was Mr. Dimmick and all the other abutters in RC2. We need to get to a decision on that.
Yeah, I, I think that that is something we could easily develop into the plan, that we would agree to support a zoning change that was appropriate with the development. I mean, obviously, we don't wanna wind up with something that's too little ground cover for our current plans, but I'm sure we could figure that out. I think what's really good about this use is that mo, unlike most commercial uses, most of the use here is either inside and quiet or outside and good-looking. There's essentially, it's not an industrial use, it's not a heavy residential use. It's a fairly moderate use and an attractive use.
Agreed.
Well, I'll tell you what I'm gonna wanna see is probably a management plan or, it's the, 'cause there's a lot of residencies to the least of it. You're gonna wanna know who they call, or do you have an onsite manager at all times?
Yeah.
Is there gonna be somebody living on the property in a manager's capacity, you know, living there? Or nobody's living there and it shuts down completely? What happens if there's something going on here, nobody knows what, who to call?
Yeah.
So, this is, this is a complex, complex.
Yeah, there's, there's potential for a manager to live onsite, but there's definitely not gonna be like an employee dorm situation.
Yeah. Talking about somebody who's responsible and who can oversee it, you know, it's closed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To ensure that there are people running around on the field at night, you know, some security or something. There's, there's a lot of attractive nuisances, you know, free pools, the field, various other things that can be outside. So, I didn't know if this is just gonna be vacant at night after 10 o'clock, or there's onsite.
The existing house on the property was, I believe, in your packet, it was brought to the property from the Grossman property, and that we were hoping to utilize up towards the front of the property, and it would double as a manager's housing and/or a sales office, so that would be occupied, and it would almost be like the gatekeeper to the property. If the, you know, the back, the back access could be closed off at night, and then you'd have to pass the gatekeeper's house to get to the property.
You want those little gates?
Right.
Did you?
Right.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, does that give you a little bit clearer sense of direction about some of the places we need to go with this?
Yeah, it does, I, I think what we'll do is circle back with our team and then meet with staff with the intent of applying in June for the July meeting. If that sounds acceptable to staff and the board.
Yeah, that sounds good. Anything we need to do with this government?
Adjourn?
No.
No, no, you don't get away that easy, 'cause I've got- Is there any other business before the board? 'Cause I need, I need three minutes of your time, and I promise it will be no more than that, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I really do appreciate it.
I think it's a good idea, that's all.
Can you wait a minute, thank you. This is, I, we're not done yet, but you can talk to Matthews. That's for you. That's for you. Yeah, it's Christmas, believe it or not. Ma'am? Yeah, no problem, excuse me, I'm sorry. And then this will go out to the board. So anyways, I'm gonna be brief, I'm gonna read it, just because it's gonna get on the record. So, I'm sorry.
Good job, Barry.
Oh, and by the way, thank you.
Give it to Josh.
By the way, there'll be one last thing, I will give one of these to Josh, I'm so sorry, Josh. This is important.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to ask you to deliver this one, or I can deliver it, we'll talk about that to Mr. Porter. So essentially, what you have before you at this point is a letter that went out to each individual. The other thing I'm gonna turn over to Andrew is one that goes into your personnel files. And what it says is the following, the letter was directed to each one of you personally. "So, as the members of the planning board, we would like to extend our sincere thanks for all of the work that went into the 2015 annual town meeting. We know that you and your colleagues spent countless hours in composing the articles, researching the information, and most importantly, working with the neighborhoods to try and achieve consensus and a positive outcome. These labors were not just a product from your daily job, but exemplify the commitment and caring that you exhibit as professionals. In closing, we recognize and are grateful for your dedication, hard work, and commitment. Thanks for working with us as a board and trying to help us put our best foot forward. This letter is intended to become part of your permanent personnel file with the town of Nantucket, and on behalf of the members of the planning board, Nat Lowell, Mr. Marklinger, Mr. McGlaughlin, and Linda, and the alternates of the planning board, I respectfully submit this to you, so thank you, guys." I thought that was really important.
Good job. Yeah, good job, Barry and-
Thank you.
Good job, Leslie and Andrew.
So now it's appropriate to adjourn.
Okay, great, thank you. We can get that too.
Could, adjourn?
I did wanna ask one question. Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn-
Oh, before we adjourn, hello. Hey, guys, sorry, false alarm.
I just, for the meeting on Wednesday, so, who will be attending, who will be attending?
I'll be there.
I probably will cancel.
No, um, there were-
I'm totally confused.
I, I did not get a chance to catch up with you, but, um, there was a request to, you know, potentially postpone that.
Right.
But, uh, I believe the, because of their scheduling, they only have so many workshops available, and so I think-
So, we get ordered to it?
Is the upstairs room not available unless it's a time off?
Yes, and they've also made a decision that they want to meet in the, in this, in this room, so-
It looks dumb, not, not like.
The, the thought-
I think we could all be at the same table, because it's not gonna be a big bunch of people.
Well, the discussion, I think that we, that I had with the chairman and with you as essentially the chairman of the MPDC is that we would, we would meet and talk about a meeting where there's more of an opportunity for a more open dialogue that might include some other people that had-
All right, let me finish.
That had expressed some interest. Actually, Melissa Murphy was one of the first ones from the school committee that had said, you know, "We might like to sit down and have a discussion about this and growth and costs and this and that," you know, on the town meeting floor. So, I think, at least my thought was that we would, you know, have an opportunity to discuss maybe framing the issues and setting some sort of other venue besides a workshop, or even having them come to one of your meetings that we would-
Framing the issues, hold right that down. That's exactly what needs to be said, because there, it's gonna get weird.
Oh, I understand, I understand that, there's, there's got-
You gotta buy another fire truck if you go, you know, these houses, that type of stuff.
Well, plus they order.
The income stuff they talked about the day ago was-
All right, all right, all right, all right. All right, can we, can we slow this down? Don't jump eight levels ahead of it right now, okay?
So, we, we've posted it as a planning board meeting, and I just, you know, wanted to make sure we were kind of on the same page here that, you know, there would, I don't know, there hasn't been an opportunity for us to prepare a lot of material. We, if you go to the town's website, you'll see that the executive summary and the introduction to the master plan was submitted. So, it was to kind of update the board on the master plan to possibly discuss warrant article protocol, and I guess maybe to at least, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you and the chair, the new chair of the Board of Selectmen had at least thoughts about sharing ideas of growth and, you know-
The board selected a few months ago where we thought this was a very important issue that they needed to entertain, and I'm thrilled-
Or quarterly meetings or something or something, so, anyway. Any thoughts?
Well, that's, um-
I don't think, I think that, I think you'd better talk to them today, I think.
Yes, you've talked to them, I haven't.
I think they wanted to get something over with quick before the summer and the other, the agenda, the fifth Wednesday thing, whatever.
I mean-
I think that the discussion with the, with, with Article 53 and the income report and these questions about, about impact fees is the bold crux of it.
I think this is far more than-
Well, no, that's what-
This far more that has to try and send them out. I mean, my only concern here is, is I really do want this to happen for our board, okay? This is so important, it's not even funny, this has been a continuous fixture, as far as I'm concerned, that the Board of Selectmen have gotten for me. How important it is for us to try to do things in a collaborative sense. I don't wanna lose that momentum. What has bothered me is that this transcended from a very quick talk between Robbie and myself to, "You will be there May 13th, well, we don't know quite what time it's at, so it's gonna be at 4:30, it'll be a roundtable discussion, which I really did want, so it's open-ended, or it moved into a 6 o'clock high, you're gonna be before the Board of Selectmen." I have my concerns, and I will vocalize that to you guys right now. But I don't wanna lose that momentum either. Am I willing to try this? Yes, but I'm not real happy with the fact that we've been commanded to do these things without any input from us.
Well, that's what I said.
So, I'm willing, I'm willing, 'cause believe me, I had a great cabinet interrupt my schedule to try to make May 13 happen at someone else's request. And I know that can't be different, that's, that's really an important thing. I don't wanna lose that momentum, but if it starts tracking in the wrong direction. So, that's exactly what I wanna do, is keep it up in mind. The past, the past, the past history has not been great, but who knows, the future is still unwritten. And there's a new chair, and I'd really like to try to at least make that happen.
Also, the education, like, can I, with the old RC2 stuff?
But I, I think-
These are important things?
I think, right, but I think the first thing we need to do is hammer, hammer out what directions and in terms of the agenda needs to take place. What is, what are some of the things we're gonna discuss, okay?
Whoever can be there at 6 o'clock here, actually.
Yeah, here it sits.
We'll do our best.
We'll do, we'll do our best. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you all for the nice letter.
Thank you, thank you, Barry.
You're welcome.